Good evening and welcome to the April sixteenth, twenty twenty five school board meeting. Would like to call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
Thank you very much. Um, is there any revision to the agenda?
I did add one small thing at the very, very end of my report, because I heard back from the state in regards to the building aid application today, so I just want to update you on that. I didn't hear it till later in the day, so probably haven't even seen it.
Alright, sounds good. And then on consent agenda, is there anything anyone wants to slide into old business to discuss? Okie dokie, hearing none. Um, I would like to address, um, Mr. Cutter and Mr. Plansky are both not going to be available tonight. They are, uh, work travel and out of work complex. Uh, so they're not going to be online either tonight, so you get the three of us keeping quorum. Um, summary of non-public actions from April second, twenty twenty five, Mr. Shoemaker motion to approve the March nineteenth, twenty twenty five non-public minutes. Ms. Ames seconded the motion and the motion passed four zero one. Mr. Cutter abstained. Mr. Shoemaker motion to approve Laura Allen as the LMS grade eight social studies teacher nomination. Ms. Ames seconded the motion and the motion passed five zero zero. Mr. Shoemaker motion to accept the resignation of Allison Dean, GMS speech language pathologist. Ms. Ames seconded the motion and the motion passed five zero zero. And Mr. Shoemaker moved to adjourn the public session at nine o'clock. Ms. Ames seconded the motion, which passed five zero zero. We will now slide into our presentations and recognitions and first, um, we have Litchfield night, little town, big attitude. I like it. Come on up. These are fancy.
Uh, Robin Carfield, born at Smith Court.
So as you've seen, uh, in front of you, you see the L- Litchfield night at the Fisher Cats and how this, uh, really came up.
He's the president of the Litchfield Veterans Association.
Okay.
I'm a middle school teacher, so that's what I can.
So we went over there to the Fisher Cats to kind of chat with them about, uh, getting involved in our golf tournament. And this came up and we talked about having a Litchfield night that we could, uh, host. But at the same token, uh, we started to talk about different things. As a former educator, retired educator, I must say, and a, and a present educator here, I got with Robin, my advisor, to talk about several things that we'd like to do. Uh, as we do this Fisher Cat, uh, as you see this here, it's really a fun night, uh, at the Fisher Cats for the town. But at the same time, what we, we, we looked at is how could we go ahead and help support teachers within the district and also the town and get more people engaged in this whole process, right? So what we looked at is, um, and I had talked to the superintendent a little bit ago, is that we, we said, you know, we got three schools, we've got a lot of families. I, I know you go through tough times, uh, and budgets and everything else. I, 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 I got it because I've been through that i- in low, as we went through that. Uh, so we came up with an idea that said, well, maybe, uh, all the money that we raised separately, which would be separate, uh, we would hold that and, and use that monies, uh, for teachers to come to us and I'll let Robin kind of expand on that in a moment. That, uh, maybe, uh, you know, that it can't get funded during the school year, that, uh, maybe it's before school, before school starts. We know that when teachers are starting to think about how to, how to engage with kids and get them more involved because it's important to keep them engaged in, in, as you go through the thing and once they buy in, they do that. So we said, well, uh, we'll have that money, we put that money aside. So the more tickets we sell, the more money we get. We get five dollars back from each one and they'll put it in a separate account because this one here, we have tickets, we have regular tickets, but we also have this one here where people can put on the QR code. They can go in there, might be a dollar and a half more, but they can pick where they want to sit and on, uh, on that game. So what we do, okay, so we look at it and say, okay, let's have a fun night with no stress. People can come on the nineteenth of July and have their kids come. So I got with the superintendent, put the stress over on him and said, hey, I'm gonna need forty people, forty kids or parents to hold the big flag in the outfield. Wow, what a deal, huh? Young kids holding the flag with their parents and stuff. Then we need kids that maybe they like baseball, maybe they don't. They say, you're gonna get out there, you go to first base, second base, shortstop, two kids with each one and outfield and whatnot. Then we can have some kids high five when they come out, they dug out the players. And then, uh, and have that all there. The only thing I kept, kept for myself is that I have two twin grandkids and I want them to say, play ball. So I'm a teacher, they're two years old, so I'm teaching every time I see it, so. And we could do that there, but it would be kind of tied in, so it's at a whole thing. And then, uh, the, the big thing would be to go ahead and have someone throw out the first pitch. So I would leave it up to the superintendent to say, from all the schools, all the schools who sell all the tickets with their families and everything, the school that sells the most, we'll give them five hundred bucks right up front. Everything else, he picks the, or whoever they decide to throw out the first pitch. It could be a student with your families out there. It's pretty, pretty, uh, uh, you know, friendly at the game. And, uh, and then we also need to have people to be on the radio because we can have it on the radio, we can talk about the school, talk about the changes, talk about the, the, the community. We can have the, the chairman of the board speak, teachers speak, uh, why it's a great place to live, work and play, you know, big, little attitude, you know, uh, a little town, big attitude. We're gonna have, we're gonna have shirts made up. We'll give them out as gifts also, and, and we're also gonna have raffles every inning. So we got a whole bunch of stuff, golf, heaters, decks, things, all kinds of stuff, all free. So if you're coming from Litchfield, say, hey, I'm from Litchfield, you, you put your name, oh, you get a ticket, put it in the bucket, they pull it out. Kid will put up, pull it out, that's, we'll have kids. We're trying to get more kids engaged in the whole thing. Then what happens? Well, you know, when I was in the Air Force for thirty years, we used to do a lot of different things. The general would say, you know, chief, let's get everybody engaged. We did all these golf tournaments and whatnot. Because people work at different bases in different parts of the organizations and you want to see how they live, work and play. And you know what? When you break down barriers, people start to talk about each other, you know, what they do, how they can do, what they go through, and that's what we're trying to do. That's it. That's, that's the thing. You want to add?
Um, I guess I just want to, so the, the Litchfield Veterans Association, I'm sure everybody who lives in town knows. They started putting up the flags at the cemeteries, they put up the flags on the roads. I think that makes an impact on our town. Start, they do the golf tournament, they built the whole park that's there. So they're kind of this force that's just trying to bring some good things. Um, they paired up with us, the middle school. We've done some things where the kids go and put wreaths and gravestones and we actually took them off. Um, but it's this connecting, um, community to kids. They're gonna raise this money, which is really good. We're fortunate enough, I think, as a school district to now be in their sights as, hey, we'd like to, you know, give it back to you in some way. Um, so I think that's really nice. We talked a lot about different things. Um, I love this idea that, you know, our budgets are a year and a half out. But if you have a teacher or someone who wants to do something, if we pair with them, now the teacher can go to the community organization that they work in and say, hey, you know, I need a hundred dollars, I need two hundred dollars. I want to do this great, great project. Um, and you can kind of get that connection that starts to go. So I, I think that that's fabulous. I think that, you know, Bobby has been doing this for years with the Red Sox, um, so he knows how to do it in ways that I can't even understand. Um, so I, I just am in total support of this. Um, and I think we're very fortunate to have an organization in Litchfield that is willing to do so much work to give back to the community that they live in. And I think that, you know, we should take advantage of, if they want to give back to us.
Do is we, we do the, like the Form Eight form and get with the superintendent, say, hey, this is what we thinking about when they give it out to the teachers or the department heads. And they say, hey, you, this is a good project, you know, they fill it out. We're not gonna put a dollar value on it, you know what I mean? So they, they submit it, you know, if it's five thousand dollars, we won't, won't do that, but you know, I mean, but, but something like that, you know, you just have to look at the whole thing. And I think it's, it would be a good thing and it, and our guys would all vote on it and guys and gals would vote on that whole thing, but I think it's really good. So if it becomes a community-based program and it's good for the kids, good for the community, then we want to be part of it, help you if we can do that, you know, that's, that's a big thing.
And our kids doing things to support the veterans in our community. Thing, good message for them to learn at the elementary building, like, why are we going to the Fisher Cats? You know, the kids, we always say, why are we playing cornhole? We're playing cornhole so that we can make the money to put the wreath on it, gravestones and, you know, we walk and do that. And anytime that we can get kids thinking about that outside, you know, I think is, is really important, so. You know, I'm not, it's a big sport, it's baseball, yeah. I love the idea of kind of bringing that connection so that little kids know we have this veterans organization in our town. They, that's who puts up the flags, that's who does this, why do we do that? And starting to have those conversations in households and things, so. And they are very generous, that's, that I can vouch for, you know, whenever we, we work and do and, and support, anytime we need something, they, they paid for all of our cornhole boards. The first year we did it, they said, what do you need? And I was like, well, I'm gonna bring mine in. And he just showed up in a truck with cornhole boards for the school. So we all had, you know, instead of having to have ten teachers bring theirs in from home to run the first competition, he just showed up with all the boards that we needed, so.
Well, we know that once they're engaged, then, you know, you get them to go, yes, it's a good thing, so. You can't, kids don't want to hear no, you know what I mean? That's, that's what it is. Even though you tell them, you gotta do your homework, and they say, no, you have to do the homework.
And we just, we just can get this out in ways that they can't get it. He get, can get it out to the veterans and a, a lot of the people in the community. But we have a portion of the community that maybe isn't as connected with his portion of the community, so we bring those two pieces together. Um, I think it works for everyone when we're talking about changes for the town, changes for the schools, when you have all of those people familiar with one another, so.
The other thing is, um, you know, we give out two, two one thousand dollar scholarships each year. One goes in the military and one for the trades. Uh, last year, we had a hustle for people that were not, they, they did not apply, wanted to go, went to a class in Alford, did not understand that they had to be enrolled in a program. We waited to the nineteenth hour to get them enrolled because we wanted to give them a thousand dollar scholarship. Because someone did not go in the military, we re- we rolled it over and gave two one thousand dollar scholarships. Then we found out later that some of the kids that went like to police science and all these other different things, they were eligible. So I don't know if the word is getting totally out here, who, am I eligible? That's what I would, wanted them to say. Am I eligible for this scholarship? Here's what I want to do, you know, and someone in the district should make that decision, say, yes, you are. But like me and the superintendent talked about, you know, even when I had my kids, I mean, you're gonna have to do the work, you know what I mean? And it's not that hard. It's only three little paragraphs to fill out.
And do you know of anybody going into the military?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, sometimes the kids know, kind of what their attention.
But they gotta fill it out. They gotta.
Or the trades, anybody who's, who's gonna go to, you know, welding or any type of thing, um, and thousand dollars does a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
This year, we also have a trailer, you know, uh, and we do community service. We finally get that all put together. Uh, we had one, uh, young lady, um, uh, uh, from, uh, this is Danny, Danny Sipruck is, is, is our girl. And she's doing a great job and, uh, but also Andrew Cutter called me the other day and he's gonna have his daughter Reagan do her sophomore project. So I had talked with the superintendent. I know that everybody's going through the budget, trying to learn all this stuff and then you have the election. So come springtime, I know the kids are starting to talk about sophomore projects and senior projects. So what I ask is if there's a date sometime, uh, maybe after my golf tournament or before, we can, uh, get the trailer over there with some of my guys, talk about the different things for their projects and whatnot, so they can see. Because I know that, you know, as I read, and then my kids, when I get kids for scholarships and I used to help them get their, uh, community services, a big portion of their resume that they were getting involved in, my kids would do, I mean, I had them for four years. I was lucky. Some kids would do seven thousand hours on a team because we did all the whole town. We did everything, all, everything. Every Saturday, my guys would be out there, my kids would be out there doing all this stuff.
Even the golf tournament, my daughter did community service for a year, so I know there's various opportunities. And she had a great time, like, it's a blast. They went out and they, they helped run the, you know, do.
And, and he wants Reagan to be, be there when we put up the flag, so, uh, we're there. I mean, uh, we want to be part of the, help you as much as we can, so what can we, what else can we do to help you?
You're doing a lot.
I mean, you guys do so much.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's great to see the involvement at the middle school. I remember when you first started talking about that and it seems like everything that you guys set out to do, you, you get wheels behind it pretty.
But she was the brains behind the thing, but she was the motivation. I'll, I'll give her a plug because it's a real plug. She is really a, a great asset to that, to LMS and what she does. I mean, I, you know, I talked with the super, I, I talked to superintendent and talked with the principal and she had this vision that, you know, she, she kind of, uh, it kind of held to me. She said, you know, I'd really like to see you in our courtyard. We like to have a reading program, but we don't have anything to put the kids out there to. And so we went ahead and I went home and I go, you know, my wife said, well, you know what you gotta do? Go buy those three picnic tables. And we bought three picnic tables and put them out there. But now we're gonna buy umbrellas because maybe the kids can't read in the sun, I don't know, but, but the whole thing is, you know, I, I think, I'm, I think more and more people, uh, want to be engaged and it's one way that we can give back, you know, now. I mean, when I raised my kids, I was, I was drinking Kool-Aid and having a bologna sandwiches, you know, I mean, that's a long time ago, but you know, if, and because of this lady here, she's been a real difference. Those kids love her and they, you can see what they're doing. I see these kids have been here for three years and I know one kid who wins every year and he didn't win this year and he was all upset, but you know, but, but it's because of her and we get together with the Red Sox and they give me all these bobbleheads and she has prizes out and it's a, it's, it, it works, you know.
It's really nice to see the kids all play together. You know, we had forty fifth graders one day, we had forty sixth graders the next day. We had forty seventh and eighth graders play together and the whole time they're smiling. And it's not just me, the whole uniform arts teacher, Dan, who is in the gym there, gets everybody going. It's just, it, it's nice to, again, the kids are connected to their community. The, our PTO at GM, at LMS is awesome. They gave the kids hot cocoa and cookies when they came back from putting the wreaths down. So it's this thing that the kids look forward to and they do such a nice job with it. So it's, again, it's just that, we live in a small town. So, you know, that, that's what we're lucky enough to be able to do in a small town, right? As we can walk down the road to the cemetery.
Me and my wife, we, we, we don't wanna, um, sub, so.
I'm wondering, is there a room for a connection with the LMS, um, and CHS softball and baseball teams in terms of incorporating them into both the Fisher Cat event, but other events as well? And then, um, having a senior this year, uh, the counseling office, the counseling den sends out, um, almost monthly now and it's becoming bi-weekly, the list of scholarships to apply to, and I do see that you're on here. Um, the due date of April twenty fifth, so it is on there.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing that I saw on there that you may, I don't know if you coordinate with Londonderry, um, if they have, um, a group, but they have some big, April twenty sixth, it said, bringing back the trades, bring back the trades. It's this big open house fair over at Londonderry High School, Skills Expo, April twenty sixth at Londonderry High from nine to one. I mean, that could be a way to connect with, we're encouraging some of our juniors to go ahead and head over there, so maybe there's a way to incorporate something.
Well, and maybe too, I'm just thinking, my head goes all the time. Um, the kids who are going to the trades and in the military may not be kids who think that they should be looking at a scholarship list.
For sure.
So I wonder if there is a way that we can try to get, again, I, my kids were, you know, the kids know, do you know what I mean? Like, I could say, who's going to the military? And they could list off the five kids that were going to the military.
If, 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 if I can say, if, if you wanted us to come one time, twice during the year, you know, and talk to the the kids that are thinking about going to trades and, you know, uh, or the military.
Maybe just having the lunchroom with the, you know, scholarship and, and the form.
I think like, great, I was mouthing it back here to these guys when we were talking. But LMS is doing their career day on, uh, it's May sixteenth.
Yeah, I was supposed to.
And like, kind of, maybe that would be a good day to kind of bring the trailer, maybe participate in career day, LMS, maybe it's above CHS afterwards, you know, or beforehand.
Yeah.
And that could be a great way to kind of, um, like weave that into some of the stuff we're already doing. And I just think I'm super excited about this, the, the Fisher Cat event, I think. You know, we're talking, I'm gonna send this out to the community a, a few times over the course of, uh, the rest of the school year, so we can help generate ticket sales, work with the schools to, um, get some student involvement. We talked about specifically the baseball and softball teams before we started the meeting, um, about getting some of their involvement in and how they can be kind of role models. So our younger students use this as an opportunity to do that, so. I think this is awesome. We appreciate everything the veterans group does for the schools, all three of the schools. Um, I, and love this partnership with them, so.
So I have a question for you, Brian.
Sure.
For, like how we have like the voters guide, right, for all the Warren articles, do we have like a scholarship eligibility guide that goes out? So not just, you have all of these different scholarships, but here's what you gotta do to apply, here's how it applies to you or it could apply.
Yeah, the counseling department does a really nice job of going through with the seniors and then the upcoming juniors, once they start getting into the, to motivate, to go through kind of everything involved in the kind of post-secondary planning and, I'm, she's not even saying college, but post-secondary, right? About different opportunities, scholarships, how you get into different programs and all of that. And there's a lot of different things. What he's referring to is, is this, uh, really cool thing. I don't know if I was ever done it before, but, um, senior scoop that she's sending out now.
Yeah, no, I, I get those too, so.
So that's great.
It was just more of, because if there wasn't that of someone, you know, couldn't walk into their counselor or a teacher and say, hey, I want to go into welding, right, is like what's out there, then there's something there for them to go look at to say, here's a scholarship that applies to trade, right? Um, if parents have questions about five twenty-nine plans and stuff like that, right? Five twenty-nine plans apply to trades and a whole bunch of other stuff.
Right.
Yeah, it's a dedicated professional educational field. So if you go to a trade school, five twenty-nine plans can apply. Um, so there's a whole bunch, it can apply to, uh, salon school and, and it can go down to a lot of that stuff. The other, uh, question.
So hairdressings.
Sure.
That's, see, I wouldn't even make that connection, so just, I would think those students aren't making that connection.
Yeah.
They're just thinking.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard, right, like, cause.
All I have to do is.
They, they do, they don't always think, you know, and you're trying to get them to think it, yeah.
Yep, it's, I, when I started, when I looked at that specifically, do I do that or do I just do a straight investment accounts that way in case my daughter says, I'm not going to college, sorry. I, right, is that I, I don't take the tax deferment, right, that would come with that. The other question I had is, have you guys reached out to the rec commission? Because the rec commission does a bunch of stuff and they would know of junior rec leagues that are not necessarily associated with the schools, but to also drum up, you know, the Litchfield night to get more kids involved.
You know, that's probably, I, I've been so, I, I've had opening days and I've had Red Sox stuff. It's not, not an excuse, but I've been pulling this stuff.
Yeah.
And I told a couple of guys, we're gonna get there, go, go to the meeting with the rec.
Okay.
Talk to them.
And I think the focus has been the schools.
Yes.
I think that's the next step. I think you're exactly right, that if you, like, and we don't want to let them leave us yet, but do you know what I mean? It, it's expanding out to.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we want to be, incorporate as many people we can, because really, the bottom line is the more we make, the more you get, right?
Well, and, and where your scholarships and donations can be, you know, I, I know you guys have the schools in mind now, but you guys also do stuff outside of town, so it's just more of going with that little town, big attitude feel.
Just for the town, right, just for town.
Right, yep.
Yeah, we want to make that clear. And if you haven't seen what the superintendent did last September, go by the veteran stone, there's like a hundred tulips all coming up.
What?
There's a lot. This guy was out there, he was out there with the L- LMS student. And they, and they've done a great job and I'm just, I, I, you know, I've, I've been trying to do this for years, I can't do it.
And Jen was big on that one too, because it was kind of like, hey, what can we do? And so she helped us connect it to the same red tulips that are in front of the veteran stone that the kids ride the bus by every day are also in front of LMS. And then they're also in front of their own homes.
So if you want tickets, I have tickets, I can get, come by the, the school, I can come by here. Per, I have tickets for just fifteen dollars, but if you do the QR code, we pay another dollar and a half. So you, you're gonna let me know. So we bought five thousand dollars worth initially and, uh, you know, and then I gave them out to all the vets and a couple of other guys, so we'll, we'll have some extra, so if you get with the superintendent, yeah, I can bring them by, whatever, or you guys can do that, either way.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And our next presentation is with our CHS music teacher, Mr. Lammy, and some student friends. Come on up to tell us about their universal trip last February.
Very exciting.
Last February sounds a long ago, but it was.
Two months ago.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I will tell you that like planning and processing of it feels like that was like six years ago, so. So I brought my three friends here. We have Triumph President, um, Matt Haley, we have band president, Caitlin McKinnon, we have chorus president, we have Steph Noe. We invited, I invited everyone here, so there could have been potential to all of CHS music that could show up. So, but these here, these folks are here to sort of represent, um, this, and we want to just sort of kind of wrap up about the trip. Um, those of you who have been on the board for a while, new members, um, to the board, there was a couple of years ago where the, where we had a trip to, um, Disney that didn't go quite as planned for a number of reasons, weather, just like part-time. Um, and then I came and proposed a trip last year, um, and I wanted to sort of explain how things could be different. And it went really successfully and I wanted to show what went well and sort of talk about what I'm looking for for the next few things. Um, in this is gonna be, I'm gonna start to talk about who went, what we did, what we did for ex- uh, for performances, their highlights from the trip and things that I want to work on for the next one, followed by thank yous. So attendee information, we had total of thirty-nine people who were supposed to go. We did have one student who was sick on the day of and she had to stay home, um, who did, it sounds like she got her refund, which is great. So she did not lose any money from that, which was great. Uh, twenty-seven student performers, four chaperones, one nurse and two school district, um, chaperone attendees. Um, five community adults attended the trip, um, on the same group as us to defray the cost. Um, they were not responsible for any students, but they were there, which was great. Um, of those parents, three of them had, um, TSA pre-check, which was great, because when I sent the kids through the security, I was always the caboose to have parents just along the way. Getting there was awesome. And then, as I said, one student wasn't able to, um, to attend, which was really fun, because they made it to Logan and then we had to get them out and back on the plane for it too late. Um, here's some photos of the travel. Amelia, do you want to explain a little bit about how traveling was, both in Florida and on the way down?
Yeah, of course. So, uh, as the nominee is Amelia, I'm chorus president and we had a really great time on the trip. A lot of the times when we were traveling places, we all felt very safe because we all knew, like, the adults are in charge of this. They know what they're doing. Everything is planned out, like, we knew that, like, if something went wrong, there was at least five different backup plans for what to do if something went wrong. And Mr. Lammy and Fred's Performing Arts put a lot of work into making sure that the trip went well. Um, in terms of like traveling and getting to and from places, we all, excuse me, um, we all flew down there, we drove on the coach buses to go back and forth. Um, we made sure that we always had, we were going to a music-related event. We had very specific schedules for when to put instruments on and off, um, the buses and when to make sure we need their sheet music. We all were really prepared. Um, I'd say getting to our rooms was pretty easy too. And the actual like airport experience, like, when I went my freshman year on the Disney trip, everything felt very chaotic, I will admit, but this year it felt way more organized. And yeah, just overall, great experience and I would say not really anything went wrong, like, it was just really fun, like, we all had a great time.
And not paying them to say any of this and stuff.
Not being held at gunpoint to say anything, don't worry.
These, uh, so the highlight of the trip, at least for me, um, besides getting to interact with the students in a like, an academic but not requ- I didn't have to teach them for a couple, for a couple of days, um, was the art of Foley. Uh, our, our assistant who helped us with this was really engaged with the kids. It was a three-hour block where we just made work. And it was so, it was so much fun that both, uh, Caitlin and Matt wanted to talk about it and they haven't decided what they're gonna talk about, so they're gonna bring.
Do you want to talk about it? Or do you want me to? I will talk about it. Perfect. Um, so I am Triumph President, uh, and band vice president, Matthew Haley. Um, and as Amelia said, we had really easy travel time down to, uh, the parks. But with the travel came the performance, so, um, we had two different performances. She's gonna talk about the other one. I'm gonna talk about the Foley art. Um, so Foley art is basically just sound effects that they use in movies, like, um, clicking of pens, being like a robot spider, which you might see, um, if we watch the full video. But, um, so, we had, uh, the band and the chorus were brought down into a gated-off area. It felt kind of cool, actually. And they had to check all of our instrument bags and stuff and cases to make sure that, you know, we weren't smuggling anything or whatever. But, um, yeah, so we walk into this big room that they actually record sound effects for, um, like for actual movies. Um, and it was like the size of a hanger too, it was really cool. But, um, we had this director and she was really nice and we got to, um, play a song that we'd been practicing from a clip of Despicable Me. And, um, we had voice actors, we had people, uh, be chosen to be voice actors, to voice lines within the scene. And then we had, um, ourselves and, you know, not-so-typical tools to make sound effects that we, uh, put into and lined up with the, uh, the video and kind of created our own Despicable Me scene, so.
Every piece of audio in this, except for one professional actor, if you look here towards the end, is the students.
Yes.
You absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, before you start, there is one fart joke, I'm not gonna lie. It is Despicable Me after all.
So this is the Campbell High Kids.
This is the Campbell High Kids.
Sorry.
This is the band. There is a choral version too that is forthcoming. They told me it was, it's a little harder work.
With volume. TV, is it the TV line?
Yeah, hold on. I'm about to check.
And what's great is that the, this little girl here is voiced by a, a freshman boy who.
Yeah, I don't know how loud that cloud is gonna be, so.
Oh, block your ears in.
Well, you're going really far.
We're jumping.
Just go, just go.
TV.
Come on.
I don't think he's a dentist.
I'm sure. Do the effects wear off? I said dot gun, not, okay. Yes, cause I was wondering, under what circumstances would we use this, but anyways. What I really wanted to show you was this. Now those are cooking robots. I told you to stay in the kitchen, we got bored, what is this place?
Amelia, which character were you?
I was that last one with the glasses, I was the oldest, the three children.
And if you go over to the next slide, you can actually, there's a picture, I think on, um if you go one more over, sorry. I think Amelia is right there on the bottom left, that's Amelia recording her lines with it. And then you're seeing in the top right corner, that's when they're clicking pens to make the robot sound effects. That top left corner is the chorus doing their version. And then um and yeah, a lot of these are just pictures from the workshop and that the woman who worked with us was really, really cool and very attentive to the students. Matt, anything else you wanna add?
No, I I mean, other than the fact that it was awesome, it was a nice experience and you know, Mister Lammy prepared us well, um we had to practice that song a lot. It wasn't that hard, but it was at the same time, like the notes you could play and whatever, but it's in a movie scene, so it has to be like. It has to keep your attention, has to draw you in, has to, you know, exaggerate uh volumes and stuff like that, so.
And we had to play to a a metronome that only only I could hear. So I had to be very strict, which in the in in a educational musical sense. I can move, I can change the tempos to accompany the band, but if the click is telling me I need to move, I had to just tell them no, we're moving, which was fun, because. We don't always spend time working on metronomes in class. And then Caitlin, do you wanna talk a little bit about the performance?
Yeah, so after we did the Foley art workshop, we got the opportunity to perform on a stage in Universal. On the city walk, like for anyone to see. And so the band and chorus each brought at least three songs, a mix of songs that we had prepared for our winter concert back in December. And ones that we were preparing for our district concert, which was a couple of weeks after. And uh we just got to perform for our families, for any like people who were in the parks. And that band and chorus went back and forth and it was really a fun opportunity, uh not only to be able to. Perform the song in, you know, a big place like that and on a real stage and besides, you know, our auditorium, um but also. Just to go back and forth, cause we went, um band would do a song and then chorus would do a song. And we got to kind of collaborate with each other in a way that we weren't used to and it was just a very fun learning experience between. That um performance experience and with the workshop itself.
And then these pictures here, top right is our performance space right in front of the Hard Rock, we're across the lagoon. Bottom right is, um I could have picked a better picture, Amelia, I'm sorry, but it's. Uh Caitlin and Amelia both receiving the award, which is in the case at Campbell, next time you go by, it's um just the uh sir thanking us for performing. And then this really cool panorama is our warm up space, um we had our chaperones and our parents in. Al- along the wings, you can't see them pictured, but we're standing in, it's one of the um uh restaurants. On on city walk and there was, they let us in, we had an hour to warm up and we just walked around in a big circle and made it sound good. And I asked them to bring their favorite moment, um before I talk about the things that I wanna fix, cause truly. The most exciting part of the trip for me was I got to see my students in a very um in a different way, because as their educator and as their assessor. I have to weigh, like I need to make sure they're growing, I need to make sure they're they're learning, I need to make sure they're practicing. But at eight thirty, when they're swimming in a pool with some of their friends, like what am I actually learning, like how do they interact? And when they have breakfast and they're tired, like what do we talk about? And that was a huge highlight for me. Matt, Amelia, wanna go first?
So um obviously there was the part of me that was tempted to say that my favorite highlight from the trip was a ride that I went on. Um but no, I was thinking about it and it's really a lot more than that, because. Aside from all the usual, yay, got to room with my friends, got to practically like a big sleepover with the entire music department, it was just. It was a really good bonding experience, I mean, we all have classes together, we see each other in school all the time, but. We don't necessarily always get to do stuff outside of that and this was just really like, everyone came together, we all. Knew what our goal was, we all wanted our performance to go well. People who I had never really seen a certain side of them before. Were locking in, they were making sure that they were getting their stuff done, if their peers needed help or needed anything, they go and help them out and it was. It was really just nice to see like, I mean, I'm chorus president, so I'm in charge of a lot of leadership things, but. Some of my other officers were on the trip with me and they were really stepping up and trying to make sure that everyone was okay, making sure that everyone was safe. Eating enough, drinking enough and communicating and it was, it was really great to see like. And as Mister Lammy was saying, one of the people who was gonna go on her trip, got sick at the airport and she was. One of our newest members of course, and she was really excited to go, um so we all. Obviously, she had to go, so we weren't able to go on the trip with her, but it was really nice because. We all kind of collectively decided, she can't go, we need to make sure that we do something nice for her, we don't want her to feel left out. So we all grouped together to make sure we could get her something nice, to help like make sure that she still felt included and. Yeah, it was just a nice group experience, I'd say, so yeah.
I would definitely say, again, there were parts where I was like, oh, like the cool things you're able to see at the park itself. But it really was a great bonding experience, not only for like the band. Uh in itself, but also between the band and chorus, because we might know each other from other things, but we don't. Interact as a full department as often as you might think. And so we got to see and hang out with the chorus more than we usually would and that was, it really is really overall, just a great way to. Band us all together, you know, um. And for the band itself, I mean, and chorus too, it's students from, you know, freshmen through seniors, so it's like. Probably the widest um variety of kids you can have in a single class and so. Because there are, and the band I think was close to thirty kids, um and we are in in the class, you know, every other day, but we still don't. Um get to, I just keep using the word bomb, but bond with each other um. Quite as much as you might think and so especially if you're in different sections, you know, you might not even talk to each other at all. And it was just a really great way um to kind of like build a bigger like team mentality, which. Absolutely, um I would say helps in performance as well.
As an eighteen year old senior who's about to go off to college, I'm pretty sure this is an expected answer, but the independence that we got to have. In the parks and kind of just to, you know, make our own decisions and kinda, you know, go in our own groups um. And be trusted to go into our own groups and still, we had a ton of meetup times, um which wasn't an issue, it was like every four hours or something like that. Cause some days we'd spend eight hours in the parking, have two meetups, you know, um middle of the day and to go home, whatnot, but um. To be able to kinda experience being independent in an area, in a very public area with a lot of people, um. It kinda prepares, it kinda prepares you for like when you, you know, go get a job in the the big city and you're in New York and, you know. Tons of people everywhere, but you kinda know what you're doing, cause you know your way around a big crowd. Um and then to just arrive back at the hotel and just be told, here's the time you have to go to sleep. Here's how much time you have to do whatever you want within the hotel, um you know, obviously without doing anything illegal. But um so we were given a lot of, a lot of independent time, which is kinda I think what we all asked for. Um we didn't actually ask for it, but it was kind of in, it was kind of an innuendo, I guess, um. You know, we are high schoolers at uh a park, working, you know. Two, three hours a day on music, um mentally preparing to play in such a populated area. Um and taking a ton of mental breaks in the parks and, you know. In our hotels and I believe there was one time Mister Lemme asked if we should stay at the park for a little longer, but we all kinda decided to go back a little early. Just because, you know, we were all so tired, um to be able to have that that decision instead of being forced to stay. Or, you know, yeah, being forced to stay in a in a park because that's what we were told, um you know, it kinda. Prepares prepares you to be more independent, I guess you could say, um and I really, I really enjoyed. I really enjoyed it, there wasn't too much of anything, there wasn't too little of anything, it was, it was just right, I would say.
I also just like to add that with like the Disney trip beforehand, I know there was so much that like went. Um astray from like the plan and everything, but I know there was a lot of nerves from students and parents and teachers and everyone going into this trip. Um but I think in the end, that just led to more preparation and I think everyone was ready for. Every scenario that possibly could have arisen and I think in that way that it benefited the trip a lot, been as a student, we all felt very. Secure, like we definitely trusted all of the adults around us, even if something were to like go. Aside from what was planned.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I just remember one last thing. But no, like Matthew was saying earlier, the independence was definitely a great thing. Um and aside from that independence and getting to see what life would be like as an adult, when you. Are trusted to have to make those decisions for yourself, it was also really refreshing because we got to see different. People who work in the music field, what types of jobs do they have, what career options are there for us? And a lot of us have been kinda just stuck in that assumption that we like music, but that isn't necessarily something that like. We can do with our lives and this kinda shows us that, no, we can, we can be fully artists, we can be sound technicians, we can. Be in performing ensembles and still get to enjoy that part of ourselves that like we've cultivated in the music department and. I don't know, it was just really cool to get to see that, so it was a great time, but yeah, sorry, talking.
Thanks you three. This last slide is just things I've been wondering, um I don't wanna waste, we've been here, it was more about them, but these are four details um. That I I'm considering for our next trip, um whether that be a a couple of years from now or further down the line. Um the company really did their best to convince me that Logan was the better call and now that I've gone, I just don't think so. I think it was only a little bit more expensive to fly the fly to Manchester, but fly to Manchester, but it would have saved. An hour and a half on either way, just getting on and off the bus, so I think I'm gonna put my foot down in the dirt and say we're go flying to Manchester, no questions asked. The neck, we did a like packaged deal for this one, we took, I I said I want to go to Universal, they told me here's what the what we're gonna do. And that's great, but it's not always necessarily, like if I wanna achieve something with my program, I wanna have a little bit more of. Say in what we do, not that they didn't tell me I could. But how do I go about with what kinda company saying, this is what I wanna do, this is what I wanna do, this is what I wanna do and how I want. So I have to find the right company is gonna be willing to do that, which I have spoken to a couple now and I'm happy to chat about it on a different time. Time management on the trip, this really went well, but I I said, I asked myself a lot, should I be having the students in the park? Of like all ten hours when that's open, or should they be have a chance to to rest and I think they appreciated the rest of the days. Um and then combining trips with another de- uh other departments or schools, um. I think in my perfect world, we have a forty five minute, a forty five person department, I would, ob- obviously it's growing. But not every student's always gonna go, so I wonder what interdisciplinary people in my own building I could take, could the performing arts along with the visual arts. Go to X city and do events together, so that we've become mutually beneficial, we can keep the cost down for kids. Or a smaller school like around around the um around the state, who has a similar sized program, who also suffers from, oh, we wanna go, but we don't have kids. Can we do a combined performance during the school year and then take that performance to a location together? It's not impossible, but these are just ideas that when I start to propose the next trip, I'm, those are gonna be at the top of my head, so if you have opinions, feel free to email them to me.
Just like, I think it is a good idea, cause we did, um I mean, it was a much smaller scale trip, but for National Art Honor Society. Spanish Honor Society and um was it AP Spanish?
Yeah, I think anyone in AP Spanish is in Spanish Art Society.
Um we did a combined trip to the Curry Museum, like little over a week ago, I wanna say. And it was really fun, but it was a lot easier to plan and and get permission to go because. We had that bigger group, so doing like, like Mister Lammy said. Going into like different departments, I feel like is a good idea too, because. Um it helps us kinda see if there is more in common with all these different groups that we kinda are able to like work together and accomplish a common goal and stuff, so yeah.
That's everything we have for.
Any questions from the board?
No, just uh when you came with us, I was, you know, I've never gone on one of these, so I was wondering. Yeah, it seemed like a great vacation, but like I was wondering what we would see for like the educational side. And I I was really excited to hear the aspect of, they were able to see like what can we do? Because I think what happens all too often is kids get through high school and they still don't know what they wanna do, they don't have any ideas. Like I remember when I was in high school, my guidance counselor was like, well, you could go to this school and do this, I was like, gee, thanks. And I became a lawyer, which I, why did I do that? So I'm glad to hear that, I think that there's a lot of value with that and I think if you're gonna do that with, if you're gonna try to bring in other groups, there's a lot of opportunity. Especially if you find opportunities like that where there's, you know, so many disciplines that kinda play into the final product, that was cool to see. Great work.
Like a great trip.
It was fun, you guys can come next time. If you want it. Anything else, anything else, anything else, we're here, you wanna plug anything?
And watch Footloose.
And the Spring Pops concert uh for band is the twentieth of May of May. Of course, is it the same day?
You'll hear them speak again, these guys are gonna speak at the concert too.
I support the CHS music department.
Thank you guys, appreciate you.
All right, moving over to our student representative report, Danny's here holding down the fort.
Sadly, Nick has a lacrosse game.
Oh, excuses, excuses.
But so for spring sports, baseball had their first home opener game today at four. Softball had their first away game today at Co Brown, they're currently oh and one. Boys lacrosse had their first home opener today, two at four, but they're currently one and oh. Girls lacrosse had a game on Friday against Concord Christian and they are currently one and oh two. Dragonfield, they have a meet on April nineteenth, it's called the Sanborn Invitation. Um so right now for our past activities, we had the the first day of quarter four was on the fourth. As well as a sophomore class, we sent the sweetheart dance on the fifth. Um some of the current events we have right now is student council is gonna be going to the Manchester Food Bank this Saturday to help give out food. Um there's, we've done this every single year that I've been there, it's hands down my favorite activity that student council does, like. You're there with all the families, like you really connect on a different level, we help hand out food. And then we also like, I have hung out, um handed out flowers the past couple of years, the people waiting in line. Families and then we can also help bring food to their cars, so I know that a lot of like the boys will help the moms with the kids and everything, um. But we're all looking forward to that and then this year, student council is hosting the Campbell Showdown Assembly. Which is pretty much a glorified family feud assembly, um it's our first time doing it, but everyone's really excited. Um and the Spanish National Honor Society is hosting a glove collection, it's for. The Dominican Republic, sorry, it was really small writing, um. Um and then obviously we have spring break, the twenty fourth to the second. Uh some of the future activities are going on is prom, as well as senior project presentation day and spring fest. Those pictures are just some of our pictures from last year on what days we had and then that is our current prom flair. Um moving on to Campbell's student life and academics, nine Campbell students participated in the YMCA Youth and Government. Model Legislature at the State House this past weekend. The students performed very well and modeled our four core values as they stepped up in various roles, working collaboratively with over a hundred and thirty students from around the state to participate. In the policymaking process. A student Caitlin Brown was accepted to the YMCA Youth Conference on the National Affairs CONA to represent New Hampshire at the national level of this program. Um and then the juniors are studying hard to get ready for their SAT tomorrow morning.
Guys get SATs during the week, mine was on a weekend.
State testing, it's a state test.
Seven thirty five, can't be late. Okay, okay, I'll be there. Um moving on to Lishville Middle School, uh the fifth graders had eyes on owls, which ties directly with their s- study of ecosystem and animal habits. The fifth graders also continued their study of the Inuit people, they were so close to collecting postcards from all fifty. The fifth graders also continued their study of the Inuit people, they are so close to collecting postcards from all fifty states. The sixth graders visited the Christina. Oh my god, that's embarrassing. Planetarian to culminate their planetary studies, the sixth graders also were learning about the executive branch of government. And the I civics is a program that they're using and enjoying. Our sus- sustainability class is working to plant a pollinator garden and is working. Working on planning a field trip to a local farm in May, they are looking for donations of gently used gardening tools. Art is finishing their pinchbox and are starting to glaze, we can't wait to see how their creations come together. And all grade levels are working to help teachers show what we know by using the SAS modules. It's not state test practice, but it is a way that students can show their teachers how well they are mastering standards based instruction. And then at the Griffin Memorial School, spring eye ready diagnostic assessments are starting. The Lego Expo was Sunday, April thirteenth. Fourth grade is participating in the annual ritual of squid dissection. Kindergarten is starting to use book creator with Karen. They should own, and then WMUR is Kevin. Skaruba came in today.
I'm pretty sure that game was over an hour ago.
Um but do you guys have any questions?
No, I was just gonna plug Friday night's Bingo Night for National Honor Society, so I uh.
And all. Proceeds are going to skills program.
Skills program, yep, so come on out, this would be a good event.
I think six thirty, huh?
Concessions, fifty fifty raffle. And prizes. Well, that'll be interesting. Alright, um we now move into community comment, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, are there any questions for Danny? We put her on the spot enough tonight, so but just checking. Um community comment on agenda items, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close community comment at this time, um we will have a second community comment, um either at eight o'clock or the end of the meeting, whichever comes first. Um correspondence, I took care of that. On April third, Andrew Cutter um sent an email to a parent and it was a response to a parent concern. On April fourth, Janine Angtel, first grade teacher and Lego club advisor invited the board to the first Lego League Expo on April thirteenth. On April fourth, Jan Sullivan emailed the board circulating draft, public and non-public minutes for the April second board meeting. On April seventh, Anthony LaPlante emailed the school board, the SAU and CHS community outlining a service project that was completed by CHS Student Council. Uh specifically, there were pictures and they did a lovely job gardening at CHS. April seventh, Dan Duet emailed the board with questions regarding calendaring of committee assignments and meetings, and there were responses from Mister Cutter and Mister Polanski. On April eighth, Principal Mitchell emailed the board thanking us for support. On April eighth, Anne Inomoradi circulated the credit card manifest, on April ninth, Anne Inomoradi circulated the payroll EFT. Manifest, which included the four oh three B contributions and dues. On April eleventh, Anne Inomoradi emailed um circulating two account payable manifests um indicating in the email body. That she is working and testing um direct deposits to vendors as a way to make payments rather than checks. So stay tuned to see how that works, on April eleventh, Renee Burgess emailed the board reminding the board of the availability. Of the uh New Hampshire School Board Association workshops, which included a new board member orientation. On April eleventh, Renee Burgess emailed the board circulating the draft April sixteenth agenda. And on April sixteenth, Principal Grantham emailed the board circulating end of the year dates for LMS, you won the award for getting those out. I know that the other schools will be on it soon. Coming in first and that uh does it for correspondence, at least as of one o'clock today, I haven't been back on since then. Um so we'll move into general business superintendent's report.
Uh yeah, so it's a great presentation tonight, I don't think I'll be able to talk, so we'll see how I do. Alright, so just enrollment, uh we mean we go over it, uh slight changes, elementary's down, the other two schools up. Pretty much a wash, we've been up here, so. Um and then we're kinda chipping away at kindergarten, we've kinda become stagnant in kindergarten, if there's anyone out there, you have kindergartners, or you know someone who's a kindergartner. Please register your kindergartners, we feel like there's some more out there in the community, so please register, that would be great, the sooner the better. Um so any questions about enrollment? Uh next capital improvement plan, so uh you've heard us talk about this uh every so often once in a while. About us trying to develop a long-term capital improvement plan, this was part of the catalyst about why we had onsite insight coming earlier this year to kinda do a capital. Needs assessment of our all three buildings, I know GMS gets a lot of focus, um and rightfully so. Uh but we wanna make sure all three of our our facilities are um in good shape kind of as we move forward and we plan for it appropriately. So we've been working on developing a capital improvement plan, this is far from a finished product, but we wanna provide an update tonight, especially with uh FIC. You know, giving a recommendation for GMS, this would be a great next kind of endeavor for them to to be aware of. Is this kind of improvement plan relying on some of their expertise to help us with this kinda planning out? Um so the first tab here um is just the as is from onsite insight what their recommendations are, right? Um so that just has the the dollar amounts and a quick summary of what the project was that they mentioned, I'm not gonna go into detail of all two hundred plus lines here, but there's a lot. One just quick note, GMS is not included on this cuz we're talking more of a big, big picture solution for it, so this is exclusive to CHS and LMS right now. Um the first tab there is a working plan, so we took all these projects, we kinda did a guess, not a guess, but an educated um. Kinda decision on where the funding would likely come from this type of project, would it be something we would put in a budget, a proposal for a given year? Would it be something that would access um end of the year funds, or it would be something that would access a reserve fund? Or uh some other kind of spending, possibly bonding for a project somewhere along the way. For example, the roof at CHS, when we wanna repair that, that's just not gonna be in our budget, that's gonna be something that we're hopefully planning for. Using that reserve fund and when the time comes, we'll withdraw from the reserve fund to pay for the project, while some smaller items might be things we we budget for. Um yearly repairs to boilers, like your general maintenance, that's something we budget for every year, so you're gonna see that cost in the budget every kinda single year. So this first tab here is called working plan version one, I know really original, just takes the onsite insight. And just does some simple shifting to line up with um with what we're currently doing. Uh if we term something would be a budgetary cost, we just shifted everything a year, because when we had these onsite insight reports, we'd already finished the proposed FY twenty six budget, so. We just took everything and shifted it a year. Um if it's something that we determined that could be utilized or could be uh. Um paid for using a reserve fund, we made that shift of everything by five years, because we're building up that reserve fund right now, we had that one article that passed. The goal is to kinda take the big swing at that five years from now. Um and then if stuff uh uh we consider could be end of the year, um kinda just general safety, upkeep of of cracks and and walls and those type of things. That's something we can start addressing now, when we get to that discussions in a month or two, you know, we have some ideas and using this as kinda the catalyst for that. So this is just kind of a summary of that, at the very, very bottom of your scroll down, we're trying to keep track of. What the costs per year per different areas of again budgeting could look like, again, I wanna stress, none of this is final, this is just. A working document where we wanna start showing for everybody how we're gonna do this big picture planning of everything and and budgeting of everything as we kinda go through. And again, we haven't made any more adjustments, just using the onsite insight information at this time. There's a second tab here, working plan where we did start trying just um. Using our own heads, moving things around, like could we push this out a year, push that out to start the balance to get the idea of what? I'm not gonna go into detail on that one right now, but that's what we could kinda do is start to then tweak this and move things around to make sense. Um like for example, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, I have it up on the TV, we have targeted, you know, twenty thirty one. As an opportunity to do a couple of significant um projects at CHS, including the roof and HVAC and related things that you would do. And if you see using just onsite insight, they would suggest going back to that reserve fund pretty quickly, within two years, we're realistically not gonna have. Unless something crazy happens, we're not gonna have that money, so we would need to kinda change the outline of what that is. So I bring this up now because I just wanna provide the update, we've talked about it a few times and put put it to practice here, and also we'll talk about FIC later. Be a great, great uh thing, I think, for them to to tackle and to look at as well, so just wanted to throw that out there and see if you have any questions as as we work on it.
I was gonna say, I love the fact that you guys are trying to level load. Way too often I see people like I need this now and they're not looking down the line and when they get different budget line items that they can pull from, right? It's now, I'm just gonna go get capital from the, you know, from the president and the president doesn't open their wallet very often, so. It's, this is excellent, this is what I love to see.
Yeah, I I agree with that, I also think um you're doing something really important, which is highlighting the fact that onsite insight is a tool that we. Solicited, however, onsite insight is not a perfect roadmap for our district, it's a, it's a perfect roadmap, period. Um and that doesn't take into account the size of our community, it doesn't take into account our financial constraints. Um so to see you taking that and modifying that based off of what our community, what you think our community. Can reasonably do is really important, so good work.
And and I also think a lot of this could help out during the budget season when you guys are going in for budget. You know, just doing, you know, figuring out what your default budget is or what your proposed budget is, right? Is you guys now have this upfront to say, we want to solicit, go get this stuff this year. And that's gonna include quotes and that's gonna, you know, that's when this all gets updated and referenced and go from there, so.
Yeah, like this is, I think, you know, Julie went to the capital improvement uh meeting last week. And utilizing this is kind of like the blue blueprint, when we go to those meetings of, they ask, hey, where's the schools headed? Here it is, you know, this is what we're thinking of them.
This is fantastic.
So just wanna provide that update, and if you have any thoughts as things go on, there it is. Um next thing is Spanish at LMS, we said we provide another update today. Well, I thought we were providing one update at nine AM this morning and now, not as happy of an update at five o'clock, whatever time it is now. We thought we had a candidate lineup, but there's a billion jobs out there and they have their pick of the litter and unfortunately, we we lost the candidate that we had for the middle school job, the. Uh one candidate we had for the middle school job, um you know, sh- she just had other offers on the table and I think with. Uh she had been previously teaching high school and I think um you know, wanna do something more, we we had a middle school position, so. Uh without getting into details, I don't wanna speak out of turn on her decision making, but she's a good, good candidate, we interviewed the process and unfortunately, I think, which is schools having. A need for for languages we have here, like she had a lot of opportunities and chose the one best for her and her family, so we lost out in that situation, but. Puts us back to where we were before, which is, we don't have a teacher for Spanish at LMS right now, so we're working on um kind of a plan to kind of execute and. Um I was gonna link it here, excuse me, I apologize, um. Yeah, you can come up while I link it, I apologize, I meant to. We're working on this today, so. Anyway, so we were working on our backup plan, obviously, the first case scenario would be uh ideally to have a Spanish teacher for our middle school. Uh program, that's that's what we want, um but and Jen can speak more of the history, she she's been here as part of it, but even just revealing the history, it's. Um I'll just summarize it, it's been up and down at the middle school, the the Spanish education. And that is no fault of anybody, I wanna emphasize that coming from other districts as well, it is a real struggle out there to find world language teachers. Colleges aren't just offering that as a teaching program anymore, as teachers who have been in it retire. Or uh just find more lucrative opportunities to be translators or something else in in this type of profession. Um it's putting us all in schools in a bind when it comes to world language, we're fortunate to have two excellent um Spanish teachers. Um at the high school right now, we're fortunate to have someone help out this year, essentially in a one-year position, who had at least a language background, a Spanish background, you know, at the middle school. Um but it it's been a tough, tough road, so we're trying to look at being proactive. And if we're not gonna have Spanish, what what can we do to offer something to students while also utilizing? Uh about continue to offer a unified art, because we still need to offer unified art, so I'll have Jen explain a little bit.
So I kinda give the historical reference when I came in uh about a week and a half before I started as administrator in October of twenty twenty one. Um there was a requirement at the high school to pull the Spanish teacher from the middle school. Um because they didn't have a Spanish teacher at the high school and how they were gonna handle that was to borrow ours, it made our, my first year. A very uh. Difficult year for the students that were there on the class, you were there, right, yeah?
Spanish for like a week.
A Spanish for a week and then there was an opportunity for those that wanted to take V-Lax and then there were substitutes in the room and it was. It was a train wreck, for lack of a better term, we pieced it together with getting total fitness in the program and Mister Harding was great and he was. Good at putting together a program, but we were kinda building the ship as we were flying it, it wasn't ideal, it wasn't what we were hoping for, so then. My second year, we were able to get two qualified Spanish teachers um who had a very different philosophy and it was about. Trying to align the philosophies between the middle school and the high school, both were excellent teachers um. But again, as teachers have their choice of places to go and things to do and when, you know, a couple of them had family issues and a couple had. You know, another opportunity in another district, so we had one who moved on mid-year and one who stayed through the year, but. Finished right before school started this year. Um so with that, what we kinda are at the point of is what's the definition of insanity, is to continue to try the same thing and expect a different outcome. When we posted this position for Spanish this year, we knew we were up against. When I looked just in the southern New Hampshire region, not even looking at New Hampshire as a whole, but just in south central, there were fourteen Spanish positions we're up against. The likelihood of us finding another Spanish teacher isn't impossible, but it's pretty slim at this point. So we have to start to consider, what are we going to do because contractually, we need that unified art to cover. Contractual planning time for the grade level teachers at that grade level, so it's not a question of being able to say, alright, well, we'll just. Wipe that position off the books and wash our hands and move on, we have to, we have to provide unified art. To be able to cover all of the classes that we need to cover to cover those very important horizontal and vertical team plans that we've been talking a lot about. So how do we do that? Um one of the things that we're proposing to potentially do is take. Spanish for those students that are really interested in Spanish, it is not the ideal circumstance, it is not a perfect circumstance. But to offer to them the opportunity to take V-Lax on their own outside of school. Um we've had some conversations with Mister Jean Paulo at the high school. About making sure that those kids have the right tools in their tool belt, because taking out an online Spanish program is very different, learning a foreign language. On on a computer is very different from sitting in a classroom and hearing the spoken word and interacting in the spoken word. So we would need to make sure that those students, in order to qualify for Spanish to do pass that Spanish one. Common assessment so that they're on the same playing field as those students who have lived in Spanish one at Campbell for their first year. As a freshman, if we have freshmen that are going to take Spanish two, we wanna make sure that they're ready to take that Spanish two. So that's one of the options that we have. Um and then in lieu of Spanish for the middle school, um what we would like to propose actually, and Brian and I had this conversation at about. Four o'clock this afternoon, um after we found out we were not going to be able to have that Spanish teacher come through. Was the idea of as we have done in the past is posting multiple positions with the idea that we would fill one. So if you remember in the past when we were trying to find family in consumer science, we posted a family consumer science position. We posted a strategies for success position and we posted a Spanish position, really with the intent of. Whatever we can find that is a qualified candidate, that is a good fit for our school, would be the position we would go with. To make sure that students have that access and that ability, the strategies for success program, if you remember, is the one that we. Introduced with our school counselors teaching um midstream last year. That was a great program and I think it's one that would be really nice to have our students have access to that program. Um because it does help with things like life skills and executive functioning and helping with some of that. Um those places we know middle schoolers aren't the best at, keeping themselves organized, making sure they know what assignments are coming next, how they keep themselves, you know, learning to keep. Themselves in a calendar and what what's next and also learning things like communication and how to talk to one another. So we would like to propose um to post for all three positions right now with a family consumer science. A strategies for success and a Spanish and cross our fingers that we find a perfect candidate to help our students.
There aren't a lot of family and consumer science teachers out there.
There are not, cuz there's no programs left in the world, there's no programs left in the country and the requirements are being cut.
So I think what we're looking to do is, we're still fine tuning this proposal, you know, we were talking, I spoke with the uh uh high school teachers today. Obviously, uh Mister G Dana, the assistant principal out there, he used to teach Spanish here and and previously. Um on some different ideas on how, what is the best, best thing for our students in world language education if we cannot fill this position and. You know, we gotta fine tune this V-Lax plan a little bit because it's not. You know, we gotta fine tune this V-Lax plan a little bit because it's not the same, like it's not an easy solution. And we really have to educate families on the pros and cons of doing that, there might be advantages of just waiting to take Spanish until that freshman year and some solid education. So we have some fine tuning still to do with this kind of idea, but we need to get this out there for people to understand, like we don't. Wanna be in a situation where we're in August scrambling, we wanna be proactive, like again, Jen mentioned that definition insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, right? We know this is a problem trying to fill this position, so we're trying to be proactive, so that's why we keep bringing this up at at board meetings, it's just kind of inching along to it. We're gonna continue to post for the Spanish job, but sometime we just gotta call it and just say like, we gotta move on, right? So we're gonna take one more attempt at at posting the job, seeing if we can get any more bites at the apple, but we've had one for a month, right? Like and you can go on the education jobs site, there is tons of Spanish jobs, like it's just everyone's in the same boat, so. I like the idea of the strategies for success. It sounds a lot like something we had at my previous school, this learning, we call it a learning lab, but this type of environment that worked with kids on executive functioning, um intervention work. Um we look at our kids and their performance and on some of the um their assessments at that middle school level, I think we could. Um utilize that for some direct targeted, you know, support for our students um that need it. I look at math selfishly as a former math teacher, uh that's something I think we could utilize this for. Um so we're inching closer to, we want you to kind of like understand this general proposal. And know that we're inching towards it, if you have huge reservations about it right now, tell us so we can stop, but like. This is what we're we're getting to, I think, in terms of of Spanish for now unless we get that Hail Mary of of a teacher coming and stuff.
And and to just clarify, um Danny's year, when we had lost our Spanish teacher. We offered V-Lax to all the students as an option and we had two students sign up to take it. And by about a month and a half in, they were like, yeah, this is not fun, we're not into it, we're not gonna do it.
Yeah, I I do have a thought on on V-Lax, I haven't shared it with Jen yet, so I'm not just gonna share it right now, I don't wanna put her on the spot, you know. Um just like after talking to the high school teachers today, they put a good idea in my head, I just haven't had the opportunity to to talk to Jen about it. Um so I don't mean to leave you hanging on that, but just like there's something that if we have to go down that road, that might be. Um a way to make that a more successful option for our students.
Do you have some serious concerns about V-Lax and Spanish, I'm gonna be honest, I had an eighth grader who did Spanish one. Through V-Lax and it was. The most I've ever fought with my child was doing that, it was awful. It she couldn't understand it, it was not the right platform. Um she really struggled with it and she was, she's a really smart kid and she really struggled with it and so my thought process would be. If we cannot offer some type of weekly support of some kind from somewhere. That would be in person or an opportunity at least for the kids to ask questions, hear the language spoken with somebody in district. Um I'm not sure that would be an option, I would even.
That's very similar with the high school teachers told me to that, you know, I haven't.
Let you guys work that out.
Worked out that with.
I think that component of having a weekly meeting, not just with her V-Lax teacher over the computer, but having someone in district that. Um could be helpful because for her, I I saw she was behind the other kids. It was really hard for her for Spanish two, three and four because that base of Spanish one is so critical.
I agree, and none of this is ideal, I just wanna stress that to everybody.
I get it and I appreciate you guys thinking outside the box on it, um I just, I'm not sure. Having had a kiddo that's done V-Lax classes for other types of classes, those have been much more successful, taking a foreign language. Through V-Lax is incre- not it's not that impossible, but it is very, very difficult.
Now, there are other digital reason, like classes you could take, I I know I'm not, this is not advocating for this right at the second, but just as an example. In other courses in previous districts, we've utilized a program called Edge Newty, for example, that we actually have a small access to here, like some of. A small couple seats to um for the high school for some specific purposes. And that could be something that maybe it's not V-Lax, but it would be a digi- it would not be a teacher, right? Like and I think that's, none of this is is better than having a teacher, right? But so we we could look at an option that's not necessarily V-Lax, it's more in-house, but it's not gonna replicate the same type of instruction that. That a teacher can, you know, and we just need, will need to educate families on what this means, like in the immediate. In that eighth grade year or or middle school years, right, and then how that translates to high school. Um there are some advantage, I won't say advantages, but when you take these tough situations you're in, try to put them into a positive spin. It could help us strengthen our kind of instruction um and consistency in the instruction, because then we'll have a consistent model in the high school, right? Kids coming in with the same type of background, um they'll be able to build consistency in the high school program. Um really kind of fine tune some things that they're working on, both teachers we have are excellent at the high school, you know, they've been doing some good work with Sarah on the curriculum alignment stuff. So they're they're, we can, you know, glass half full, there could be some things that could be helpful, we just bite the bullet on this, you know? Um but I think in a perfect world, we would all want a middle school option, so.
Yeah, and then on the strategies for success, having had a kiddo that did that program. After the Spanish teacher left halfway through in seventh grade, I think that is a fantastic program and if that. What I felt bad about for that time was we had people that were basically doing a fifth period or this was in addition to. So having a dedicated teacher that can really work on that curriculum and really have that focus with the students would be. I think that has an opportunity to be a really great class.
I cannot stress that enough, dedicated teacher for that is huge, that's how we did it in my previous district and that's what made it work, it wasn't just someone's prep. Or extra class or whatever, it was a dedicated teacher and it makes significant difference, yeah.
Without executive functioning, I mean, I think most kiddos.
To help them really like learn how to. Help themselves before they get to high school. You know, and it also um goes to like just looking at the plan and I've been in all of these conversations as well. Um and just like looking at our data and trying to get more MTSS. Within people's days, like this is a great opportunity to address those things.
So I can tell you even most directors in my company need help with executive. So that's not uncommon, so I I think just getting early on, right, that can always help of how to communicate, right? And my boss always tells me, learn how to manage outwards and upwards, right, not just down, so and that could always help. What does V-Lax stand for? Um and what is covered under strategies for success?
So we put forward a um skeleton curriculum is the best thing I can describe to the board in a. Um almost an emergency capacity, it was it was a pinch in February uh last year. We had the Spanish teacher depart mid mid-year for a position at the Department of Education, which was great for her, not great for us. Um and we had a team that included our uh speech pathologist, Katie McGary was wonderful. Our four um mental health team, our school counselors, who are not teachers, but. Took one for the team and stepped up, were teachers for that second half of the year. Um and they built a curriculum that involved things like organization and how to plan. For long-term projects, how to map out, keep your literally empty out backpacks and let's talk about what are you, what does your backpack look like? Put things in folders, make sure, no, you don't have all these crumpled up loose papers at the bottom of your backpack. Um there was a whole personal finance component where they were talking about how to keep a checkbook, how to manage a budget, how, what what salary do you need to earn? To live in a house in Litchfield, we had that conversation, it it just really allowed them, you know, building a grocery shopping list for this for their. Um for their week, what do they need to do, they had they had a component of that, so it was. Really a kind of a catch-all class, there's a whole section on interpersonal communication, which we know middle schoolers struggle with. Of how to interact and disagree appropriately, so if they were having a conflict, if they were having a disagreement, how could they? Share their opinion without telling someone they're a horrible person or calling names, um so it was a whole. Six, it was a six-unit series and off the top of my head, I don't have it right in front of me right here at the moment, but. It was a really helpful addition, um the kids who took it um learned a lot. The teachers who did it as an extra in addition to their regular um career and and they will absolutely kill me. If I make them do this again, so I really want it to be a dedicated person because they are. Very busy as counselors to not have them take on an extra role, I wanna be clear to them, if they're watching at home, I'm not saying you guys, don't worry.
So the essentially life skills education, right? Here's all the stuff that you're gonna have to figure out and deal with as you guys get into the real world, right, here's the basics of how you need to get into it. Um I I think I'm all for that, I I think there should be a lot more of that in a lot of other places.
They did their taxes, we had a ta- a tax person come in and yesterday was tax day. Talked all about how to how to do their taxes, it was really a great conversation, so.
That was used for the winter.
Yeah, it it's, I was just trying to figure out what what does that entail, right? It is this, you know, purely project management type, you know, how do you succeed at? You know, the different strategies that go into that, or is this kind of like what I was hoping it would be is life skills and early introduction for all the stuff that. Kids don't see every day, right, they don't see their parents doing, they don't see what their older siblings are doing in college or understanding of, you know. Budgeting, right, is everyone who does a budget is that they realize they know what things cost, so they go groceries, alright, I've. I've got between like here and here to spend on groceries, I can't go out here every week, right?
Get the six dollar Starbucks every day, cuz if I did that, this is what's gonna happen, or I can't, or I can.
Like, right, or it's even understanding, right, one of the things that my family fell into when things got very busy was, hey, we're just gonna DoorDash, right? And then it was, holy cow, that's how much money we're spending just in fees for DoorDash, right? But it's instant, you don't see it until you sit back and you look at it and you go, oh crap. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess we're looking for your blessing to continue down this road for now. But like this is kind of the skeleton of of the plan and we're gonna fine tune it with with the help of the the high school teachers and and Dana and stuff and. Obviously, John and and everything and um everyone kind of on the team, and kind of keep doing it and we will repost and if. We get lucky, great, we'll come here next meeting celebrating and if not. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, awesome, thank you.
Alright, next, um. I I have an opportunity that that our nurses have been looking at, I think Jake actually, you may have been the first person that came up in a principal. Meeting or something that we play for, um presentation and stuff like that, and then our nurses kind of hopped on board, so kind of with Jake and and. School nurses here in the district and and I'm not gonna read this word for word, but um you you're welcome to go through the slideshow. Um so who we play for i- is kind of a nonprofit organization, well, they have some costs associated with it, but they're not looking to make a huge profit of it. Um is to um kind of do uh screenings for students be. Who could have undetected heart uh condition, so to kind of prevent sudden cardiac death, that's what it is. On the statistic one, in every three hundred, um young people have some sort of heart condition that could lead to this. And it's undetectable by just a a standard physical or anything that line, so this is an organization, a nonprofit. That was started by young people when they lost one of their friends to a to a sudden cardiac death and now they're kind of expanding the program and everything. Um so this is making its way to kind of New Hampshire and and New Hampshire schools are kind of um jumping on board and and um having them come in and and. Uh do these type of screenings at schools, um so our our Jake uh brought to our nurses or the nurses work with Jake, you guys work together. Uh they kind of started examining the program, um and and what if was something that we can bring here to the to the Litchfield School District, so. Again, just a quick summary of kind of the numbers, one in three hundred students have some sort of heart condition that's not. Um traditionally seen and and if you look at just the high school, for example, we have about three hundred and forty kids, so that means there's someone in our high schools that. You think statistically that could be in this situation, um and we wanna try and be kind of proactive and and this kind of heart screening. Um can kind of catch the the issue, so so someone can get it um kind of addressed, so there's supposed to be a video here, okay, that's gonna summarize it.
Every day, millions of students participate in activities they love, in a moment that can come to a sudden in tragedy, sudden cardiac arrest. One in three hundred youth has a detectable and potentially life-threatening heart condition. Has missed ninety-six percent of the time on a standard student physical. But we have a power to change this. Who we play for has helped identify hundreds of these deadly heart conditions. A simple, non-invasive, five-minute ECG screening can detect these deadly conditions before a cardiac arrest. And truly save lives, for every kid who never had the opportunity, this is who we play for.
So that's just a kind of a quick summary of the programming that they do. And like I said, they come and do that E ECG kind of a scan for our kids and and kind of do that, you can open this up beyond just your student body, but we would target our students at first. There's another video here, I'm not gonna play it right now, it's about five minutes long, that walks you through what an ECG screening is. Um if we were to pursue this, we'd send this out to communities so people could get an understanding of what it is. But what we are looking to do is kind of hold an event here at the at the high school at Campbell. Um to hold some screenings, we were targeting September of next year, cuz you have to book this in way advance. But just to be upfront, there might be an opportunity for us to do it for the end of the school year, um cuz they had a couple openings and they reached out to just let us know they have some. Uh one opening in May, one opening in June, if it works, works for us, and uh what would happen is. Um you know, students could pay twenty dollars for a screening, we have a whole schedule um run by our nurses here at Campbell, people can come in. Um we would probably target a school day, so kids can come in like during a free period or during lunch period or something like that, come in and do their kind of five-minute screening. Um get parent approval, obviously, before all this, sign off on a form and everything kind of connected to it. Um our nurses talked about doing some fundraising as well to kind of cover the costs of any students who. Um or families who might be in need and and have uh an issue covering the costs of it, and obviously, we have some resources to help out with that as well. And that we would open this up to all our students, uh again, we target, you know, the ages they're targeting here, ten through twenty-five, so we're looking at middle and high school students. And this again is just, it'd be, we would have kind of like the clinic at the high school, no requirement for anyone to participate, we send out and get parent permission. Um it's just an opportunity for coming and get the screening um for this low cost to kind of see, to kind of detect this issue and work with this program. Um there's been some excellent work done at the high school in regards to health, um you had the drill this week, last week, it's all blending together. Last week. Um with the A A the A the AEDs, I I tried to call them LEDs the other day, that's not what they are. But the AEDs, which is students senior project, and we did an AED drill um in the high school and everything like that. Uh learned some good things through that, so this is again kind of that heart awareness that we're kind of looking at, that kind of heart help. So I'm here at the board to kind of ask um your approval for for us and the team, the the health team to. Continue to pursue this and and try to set up a date for this this group to come here and and offer these health screening, or these heart screenings.
I have two questions, is this something that we would try to do annually?
Yeah, I think so, you know, or at least on a semi-regular basis, we'd be at kind of their scheduling, you know what I mean, like when they're in the area to do. Um they come around at different times of the year to different parts of the country and stuff, so.
I don't expect you to know the answer to this question, it depends on how much you've researched this, but. Uh are the are these heart conditions that are causing these, something that are like you're born with, or is it something that you can develop over time?
I don't know the answer.
It'd be interesting to know because like, you know, in terms of frequency of screening, I mean, I think this is a really easy thing to do to prevent a really terrible thing. I think it's awesome, I think you should absolutely be doing this.
I'm wondering, I mean, is there, we do the concussion testing. Before everyone has to be cleared for athletes, is is something that maybe not this year, but. Eventually, this is something that we would want, particularly our student athletes to have to have done. I just, you know, I don't like making requirements, but at the same time, I, you know, if they they're incredibly active, that is some of the ways that can trigger one of these. SCA.
Yeah, I think it's something to discuss, um I didn't play the video cuz it's a longer video, I just showed you the short kind of forty-five second clip, but. Um the 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 student who passed away, that kind of was the catalyst for this kind of program, um he was a music student, you know, and that's they were talking about that. He was a performing arts student and I, you know, the pictures they show him, he's playing his instrument and. He's dressed up nice and and this performance and everything like that, I don't know if he was an athlete as well, but. Um you know, I think it covers all students because that's what it is, it's just a sudden sudden heart condition or sudden thing, so. But I do think for for our athletes that kind of are in those high-pressure situations, we all see tragic stories from time to time of, you know, as a student. You know, playing a basketball game and all of a sudden, right, you know, they're healthy and couldn't be any healthier and active, right, and then there's some sort of issue that's just missed, so. Um it could be something that if it makes sense to do it yearly, we do it, connect it to concussion stuff where. If we can't require it, we at least align the things together to to kind of encourage people to take advantage of this and and everything, so.
You just to vote on this or you just?
Um I I would like your approval just because it's a health-related thing, um or at least your blessing, I don't know if you need to do a full-on uh.
Which one do you want? Blessing, do you wanna vote?
Yeah, I'll take a.
I'll make a motion to uh approve the pursuit of the, what is it called? I'll make a motion to uh approve the pursuit of the, what is it called?
Heart screening.
Heart screening program.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. There's a whole three of us, so three zero zero.
Awesome, thank you, and we'll send out information to the to the community as well, uh probably maybe even this exact PowerPoint. Once we get this kind of off the ground and everything, so people can see and have the questions themselves, so. Thank you. Um next up to me, uh there's a link here, it's just an FAQ, um. There's a law, if we remember, we had the Power School breach, I think it was back in December, um a lawsuit is beginning to. Be formed out of California um towards Power School. And that's where it's originating from, and again, it's starting to migrate its way to other schools in the country and other school districts in the country, and whether or not they want to. Hop on, so it's made its way to New England, so some New Hampshire, Massachusetts Massachusetts schools. Um are learning about this potential potential um lawsuit and and wondering if they wanna be a part of it. Um we we heard about it through through circles that we have and connected to, we reached out to our attorneys. They're on the fence about us joining it, you know, and whether it's actually beneficial to us uh in the long run, or working with a slightly different. Um group in terms of of remedies related to the Power School lawsuit that um it's more localized, New Hampshire driven. But I wanted to make you aware of this, because if it is something that. We do, we do think is right for the district, we might pursue it, so I wanna get that information to you in this FAQ. I don't need you to do anything more other than kinda read through that document, cause we're still a ways away from committing to even potentially joining it, that would be something we would bring to the board. To see if you're comfortable with, but since it's starting to gain a little bit of traction, I don't want you caught off guard if. If down the road, this does make sense for us and kinda provide you this information in advance, so it's more of just general information, so. Do you have any immediate questions about it, I know you probably have to review that document and stuff.
I, the only thing that I would say is with um whatever the New Hampshire version of this is. Uh one thing I I that did stick out to me is that one of the remedies they're seeking is indemnity for uh future litigation, which I think. Would be one thing that should be particularly of interest to. District.
Yeah, and I might rely a little bit more on, just you you guys personally, cause of your backgrounds, uh there's a lot of lot of words in here that uh. You probably understand better than I do, so.
I'm just uh questioning, this is school districts that are bringing this forward, this isn't necessarily individual families or parents.
Correct.
I would be curious, is there a separate lawsuit that families are joining or not, do we know?
We don't know, yeah, so there is a group.
Well, no, no, I understand, but I I mean, in terms of if they're going after Power School, I just wanna. I would wanna understand, people in town, they're the ones who have been.
Yeah.
Students are the ones who have been directly impacted.
So we're kinda still learning everything, so this particular one is focused on school districts, right?
Yeah.
And they have a term for it that, again, I'm not being. Mass action, which was a new term to me, uh I'm used to that class action, but that mass action I'm not familiar with, so. Um that's obviously.
I mean, I would I would imagine that the cost of Power School is gonna increase quite drastically when they have to start paying this bill, or are we?
Well, I I don't know, to be honest, well, they may if they pay this bill, yes, I think that might be something, but. In terms of like the immediate, I don't think they kinda wanna jack up the cost too much in schools, it's cause we're all just switch SISs then, you know. Which is not fun, like, but if it's gonna be twice what it costs now, like that would be something we would we would pursue, you know, so.
Just keep us posted.
Yeah, keep continue to keep you posted, so.
Yeah, that's a question.
I mean, I've been looking back and forth just on the information you're sending out, it hasn't been found that Power School actually did anything? Or was it just they got hacked?
So the big issue that could be, they could be liable for, is that they have a certain amount of time to tell us when they've been breached, and that. You can did, there is questions regarded whether they fulfilled that obligation, so that would be kind of the crux of any lawsuit, right? Now, in terms of when they became aware that they were breached compared to like, cause they there was the breach. Some time, but the Power School becoming aware sometime, and then the start of notification schools, right, so when does that timeline kinda start? When you factor in Christmas breaks and weekends, like all of this stuff, like so.
No, I. I understand that, and and I guess, cause one of the things I read upfront, right, was one of the complaints is that they have a duty to ensure that they have sufficient. Measures in place to secure the data, and I'm assuming at some point when you're dealing with P with PII or um, you know, PIH information, right? There is some standard that goes into, it's gotta be protected to this level of cybersecurity jargon. So then it comes down to, was it found that they were not sufficient to industry standards, right, so and that.
It does seem to be what they're alleging in this.
Right, so and and that's just, because my thing is like, well, they didn't identify in time, well, they're gonna explain that away due to Christmas breaks and all that other stuff and. But if it's found like, oh no, they have like a firewall from nineteen ninety-five, then that and they haven't worked on their server security or firmware. Then yeah, I'd I would, I would say we should keep looking at this. Well, I mean, it doesn't really, if you join this, it there's no, it's contingent fee, so we're not gonna incur any cost on this.
You know, cause I'm sure we'd have to provide some.
Well, they're claiming it's not that much time.
They claiming that, but you know, our attorneys say might be a little more time than than you think, you know, and you're at kinda their mercy, so. Uh Julie's been in touch with other other groups as well, um that are again more centralized to New Hampshire through the VA Association, those type of things, so. Um we're kinda gotta looking at whatever makes best sense for the district in terms of this, so.
So stay tuned.
So stay tuned, um the last thing, I I just updated before the meeting, cause I just heard back from the state uh today about this, so we had sent in. Um our building aid application, we talked about this, I think, two meetings ago, um that we're gonna get ahead of that before the May first deadline, and we did, in case there's questions. Like what came back today from the states, so um this is the finalized uh. Um application which you saw, I think two months ago is when we last said it on the agenda, but just to kinda refresh your memory, I'm gonna pull my email address, so I can get this right. So they had some follow up questions. And I wanna bring it to your attention today, and we can have a long, cause it is a late addition to the agenda, we can have a longer discussion next meeting. They said because we were good about getting it in ahead, you know, even though our next meeting is after the May first deadline, they're gonna say we got it in, we're good, now we just. I had that in writing, we're good, uh but they have. Um a couple of things that we have to have a discussion documented in minutes about at a school board meeting, so. There's two things, the first thing is a pretty easy one that we can talk about right now, the total estimated project cost listed on that form, so if you open that form right there. We took the previous costs, we multi- we uh increased everything by three percent, because that's the standard inflation cost, and that's what. We were told to do, there it is, so it's a the previous project up three percent uh across the board and everything from there. So so feel free to look at that that total amount um on the on the pricing sheet there. Uh it gets a total of that forty-four millionish project last year, total up to forty-six, again, we're not. We're not committing to doing this, we're just for staying on the list purposes, have to do this. Um the next thing, which is I think we may wanna have a longer discussion about, which is why we may wanna kinda kick this down to the May seventh meeting. So from the state, they want us to know that we need a statement from the board that if the project is selected, this is an adjustment to their building aid language. Um that's newer, that a statement that if the project is selected for building aid, project shall be put forth for voter consideration, subject to receiving building aid. I'm trying to get some clarity, because we did do that last year, right, like we put it up to a vote last year, it was contingent to that, have we met? That 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 this thing right here that we've done that, right? Or are us sending this in as a commitment to putting this on the ballot?
I can't imagine they're gonna say that we met the requirement by doing that, because it was a no vote, so what.
But we have put it out to voter, right?
But like what would the, like from their perspective?
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, so I had a call into them this afternoon, just plain phone tag, gotta clarify that and stuff. But that might change our discussion, we can go over a recommendation for the FIC today, also the likelihood of. Of us being on the list, there's the big conquer project that's ahead of us, that's gonna, or there might not be building aid available for any district. Uh next year anyway, so this might be a moot point, but I'm trying to get clarity, because I don't wanna trap us as a district wide. Correct, exactly, so just getting clarity from the state and that, so I wanna pause, I want you to think about that before the next meeting. And that might mean we actually take ourselves off the list, because we're looking at some different options for GMS and stuff like that.
You know, I know you're not looking for feedback on this right now, but at the end of the day, um. We can put anything on, they we we don't, you know, we can put two conflicting things on if we needed to, and not that that would be ideal, but. We could theoretically do that, um. S- you know, such that we gave people the option of at least voting on that.
Yeah, these building aid rules are newer too, so they're adjusting, so everyone's learning the the new rules. Um and this was good, cause this was exactly what we're hoping by getting this done ahead of time, is to be able to go back and forth and make sure that. We're doing right by the district and not waiting to submit this till, you know, the day that it was due and stuff like that, so. Um so more to come on that next meeting, but something to consider and think about in the couple of weeks ahead. And that's it for me. Try it, sir. Head over under eight o'clock tonight, that we're just flowing by.
Better, we better kick it into high gear.
Julie's gonna help.
Uh alright, so I updated our uh financials, um and as well as our transfers, um we are. Right on target as far as where I think we should be comparatively to that last year. Um I did wanna give you an update with regard to GMS, the plumbing issue, we finally were they were able to receive the septic pump. Um so that was installed last Friday, so far so good, thank goodness, I just also wanna publicly say that. While that is great that that is done, we still wanna be really um cautious about not flushing wipes and. Paper towels or things of that nature, um we don't wanna have to do this again.
I had the joy of uh for joint loss, um inspecting all the bathrooms at GMS on Monday, uh yeah, that was fun. But when we got down to the first grade wing, I will say, cause we would wash our hands after we touched all the surfaces in there, and there was no paper towels in the bathroom. Cause they're all on the outside of the bathroom on a desk with a trash can, so that the students cannot flush them, so I thought that was a fair. Solution, just walk out with your wet hands and then grab your paper towel. And away from the toilets.
And I hope you didn't find any wipes and any.
Uh no, okay, I'm not gonna tell you that.
There's the preschool bathroom that should have wipes, there's a couple designated bathrooms that should have.
I did not see them in regular bathrooms.
Um the other piece to that project is um I had brought um to the board before the estimate, um they came in right at um the estimate. Which was fantastic, um for transparency sake, I did wanna ask for approval for a transfer, it's still within. Um the building and grounds um funds, but moving the money from the contractor repair maintenance line. To the general repairs maintenance line um to cover that cost.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh. Transfer of the funds from the contractor repair maintenance line to the general repair maintenance line.
Second, all in favor? And that's a three zero, sure, pretty much.
I also want to let you know that the DRA, um all of the uh forms that we need to get into the Department of Revenue. Uh with regard to the budget have been submitted and approved, we just received approval for that on Monday, so that's fantastic. Um solar update, um. I guess the the final report has been uploaded to EverSource, that was um delivered on April tenth. So we are now in that ten day waiting period, um anticipating the approval of the project, and then hopefully the installation of any near.
The calendar or working days?
That is a great question, I believe it's calendar days, I, yeah.
So they've got four days to get back to us. I'll give them five if it was uploaded halfway through the day and they're gonna.
And then the last item that I had, um we did have a a our single audit, um had a one finding for us, it was a minor. Um finding, but with regard to um, uh there was a contract for um one of the providers that we had using federal funds. That didn't have a disbarment clause in it, um so when there's a finding like that, it goes to the New Hampshire office, the federal compliance. Uh and they just need to make sure that we've done everything to remedy that situation, um so we actually, um with regard to our. Purchasing policy with regard to federal funds, that the policy itself was actually updated in December, and that includes all the changes, so they were happy with that. But they did want a specific internal procedure for us for for uh for federal funds, and they gave us an example, so um I. I submitted that to them, explained that I would need to get approval at the next meeting, um but they were very pleased with this, so I just wanted to get approval from the board. Uh for this purchasing procedure, and again, it's just an internal procedure.
Make a motion to approve the internal procedure.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, three zero zero.
And that's all I have.
Alright, Danny, you have a big morning tomorrow, seven thirty, not seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Yeah, so why don't you take off, get a good night's rest, have a good breakfast and good luck.
Charge that Chromebook over there.
Good luck, have a good night, bye. And curriculum instruction and assessment update.
Alright, I'm gonna keep us at the under, cause I took the under too, so. Um okay, so um as you know, we just sent Danny off um to do SATs for tomorrow. Just wanted to update, we are heading into full swing of assessment season. Um everybody is gearing up, like um the LMS report um that Danny gave tonight. Um everybody is in full swing of using modulars. We had a conversation with the third grade teacher, done a GMS, was awesome with modulars, and. So we're doing that, and everybody is just, you know, getting ready for that, um and then. Um the um Department of Ed is looking for feedback from families. Um on literacy instruction in the state, I actually work closely with the um literacy person up at the state level. Um doing a lot of literacy leaders types of things, and um they really wanna know. How not only educators, but how families are viewing literacy instruction that their students are receiving, so. In my curriculum corner um newsletter that I sent out on Sunday, I put a little, put some information in that. Along with a link that um families can click on to share their thoughts and feelings on. How their child's literacy instruction is going, this could lead to further initiatives that the state. Um pays for, which is really good, they just finished a um six phase cycle of. Training teachers um in letters, which is a fantastic, I took it. Uh even though I'm a reading writing specialist, I was like, wow, this is amazing, um and they uh they have other um. Programs out there that they're um putting out, so. Um it would just be a really nice way to give our feedback in how literacy instruction is going and. Perhaps find other ways to get some funding, to get increased training, programming, all kinds of things that are better aligned with the new. Um literacy requirements that are coming out, that came out in the at three oh six rules, so um if you could just. Click on that link and share feedback, that would be awesome. That's all I had today.
Doctor Taylor?
Uh going down that path as a daughter who's in speech at GMS and all of that stuff. I can say one of the things as a parent that I find very confusing is she's given. Things to work on and instructions and trying to reinforce that at home, what I would do is gonna be remarkably different than what the instructors or the teachers are doing. So even just, hey, this is what we're working on, this is what we mean, and like, you know, like, uh I'll even do the same thing with math. It's like, well, it's, you know, your math addition fact, so like, what what are the. So going is like, oh, that's the stuff that I do all the time in my head, that's what you mean from this, so it's just getting. It I guess reinforcement of what's taught at the schools back to the parents to help supplement that, right, versus. Us like, cause we did this, we did my daughter harm by not harm, but. We held her back a little bit just in the literacy, in the speech therapy. Because what we taught her, which we thought was right, was completely off the tracks, no, you should not be doing that. So it or according to what, you know, the, you know, state speech therapist before, when she was in preschool, and they said that she qualified and all that stuff, so. As a parent, I would greatly appreciate that of, you know, if they're in title one or something, get that information. Here's what we're working on, here's how, here's where you can go see to help reinforce this.
Oh, we could definitely work on that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not a problem.
Alright, moving into public minutes, so I have a motion to approve the April second minutes.
I I will make a motion to approve the April second. Minutes, I didn't need to get to finish.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor of approving the April second public minutes, please say aye. Alright, three zero zero. Moving into new business, FIC GMS recommendation.
I'll start, but please anyone else, so, uh, F I C um has a recommendation for the school board, um, which is attached here. Uh, I think is properly attached here, I tried, I apologize, I was shifting it over from word. And uh, to summarize, I think it's kinda pursue um kind of the renovation path, right, to go out there and start like getting some effort. R F Ps um to look at uh essentially different design uh ideas to to make sense for us. Um, but Dan jumping at any point, you've been kind of steering the ship.
Uh, I I guess the big thing out of this, right, is we just don't want another study, right, this isn't a. R F P to go get a study of what the best solution is, this is as one of the things that Kyle Barker mentioned when he came in was. To create that partnership of, it's an evaluation of here's our wants, here's our needs. Here's what, you know, the school district and the board and the education staff say that we really need, plus the physical things. Let's go find a firm that's gonna work with us and help devise what that best solution is. Um, this recommendation does detail out that we think just with the cost impact and everything else in the state that we're in with the town. Um, the F I C does not recommend pursuing a new building with that firm, we've already got that path, we're gonna stay in. Supplement in uh notice of intent, if it's given and all this other stuff that we can pursue and put to a vote. Um, but essentially it's then, uh, don't take anything else off the table. If they recommend your long term path is here with all of these factors and everything you're trying to do, we recommend X path. Right, is so, um, one of the things that I know Peter is wanted to make sure was in there is just look at all three buildings. For the complete viable option, if shifting grades around is a thing and if that makes the most sense with all the different factors. Just don't immediately disregard it, but it's meant to create an R F P in a cooperation between. Whoever the school board says that firm is versus handing them a design drawing and say, go build it. Type situation, um, that's kind of it, I mean, it again, it's just to highlight. The educational and operational versus the cost as well, right, is the survey came out and said, it's gotta be a balance, right? We can't heavily weigh one way or the other, um, take what the. F I C has done in terms of, here's the educational needs, right, Dan Mitchell and Brian Hull. With creating, here's what he sees the deficiencies are in the building. So it's to take all of that and come back and evaluate what's the pest path forward. Counter to that, and we stress this heavily and I know Brian did and is whatever is recommended, we gotta believe. Right, and that includes the F I C, we gotta help market and and not essentially market it, but get it out there and saying. Listen, we did all this work, they came in, we told them what we were looking for and we worked, this is what they're saying, this is kind of the path that we wanna go down.
Isn't this, this is more or less an R F P to find someone to help us build an R F P, right?
It it's like.
Like at the end of the day, they're gonna help guide us to what we should be putting out for a final R F P for for the pro- like the actual project.
Right, but it's not gonna be to go then take it back out to bed, right?
No, it'll be a separate R F P, but like, right, but this is us having someone help guide us to that next point of. Because the the problem that we had, I think, was when what Kyle helped share with us was. We were not giving them enough of, these are the things that are, that we need educationally.
Right.
So they were left to go go figure those things out, so what we're actually doing is we're going out to someone and saying. Here's what we want educationally, but help us refine that into what we should actually be asking for for a project.
And the physical needs, but it's also the implementation part, right, it's not just the evaluation to go build it. What we're suggesting is go work with an architect firm that has the con- the ability to go solicit contractors to do the work. Or a design build firm of where they're all in house to the same company, so come in, help us define what we need. And then, you know, the school board would be at the discretion to say, we got X, you know, that ain't gonna happen, right, they're gonna come in, they're gonna give us a quote for everything. And just say, that's not gonna happen, what can we do for X dollars? And come down and then whatever that X dollar figure is need, the school board needs to come up with, whether it's soliciting the town, gut feel, whatever. But it's not necessarily just an R F P to go help us to build a project. It would then do that implementation of the first big chunk.
So now that I'm not on the F I C anymore, I'm gonna, I'm gonna approach this from just a school board member. Um, perspective.
Please do.
And I think, um. I just wanna, you know, put this out there, not saying that we need to change what's recommended or how we pursue it, but I do wanna just put out there that. Uh, you know, we, what we learned from Kyle was, hey, had I been given. Different parameters, you would have been given a different. Um, and a lot of what we're asking for here is stuff, are are services that he provided to the extent of like was working with. You know, construction firm to get us accurate numbers, so, um, yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that people understand, we are going to be duplicating. In many regards, except for the difference is going to be the parameters, so.
Right.
That's just.
Yep, so, but it as even Kyle said, when he created those numbers, it was based on a set of assumptions that he had. Versus working with us for him to come back and check with us, hey, this is what we're thinking, is that right? And then we could have absolutely done the, yeah, no, that that's not, uh, you know. That assumption doesn't need to be there, if that assumption wasn't there, what does that do?
Right, I guess my my thought is. My my thought is just that I'm interested to know what this is gonna cost us. To go out to someone who is starting from square one versus what it would cost us to refine the. Directive to someone like Kyle Barker, who has already done a considerable amount of work on this.
Well, and and that would be is we can, I mean, there's nothing saying that we can't use, that Kyle Barker can't come in and bid on it, right, so. That that would be the difference, right, and then we'll say, well, you know, in a part of our selection criteria can very well be with. He's got knowledge of everything else, right, or if we really need to, we could say. But this person doesn't and this may put us on a better footing within the town and everything else.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're very clear on the fact that we have done a lot of this, we paid for a lot of this work. Already.
Completely understand, it it is, uh. But even if we ask Kyle Barker to redo it and come in and work with us under a list of assumptions. I I don't think he would do it for free to to revamp those assumptions.
Of course not, I'm and and I don't know the answer, it could be that it's the same cost for someone to talk different, I just, you know. I don't know how much work it takes for them, cause I was not involved at the beginning process with the town. I don't know how much it took to get up to speed, I know that there was a lot of forums and stuff like that and, you know, we pay for that stuff hourly, but.
And I mean.
It could be equal costs.
It could be, and and I know at my place of business and where I do this quite often, right, is there are meetings, right? I sit down with the facilities project manager and go through, here's my requirements, here's, you know, this is nice to have, this is, you know, needs, right? Um, they tell me what are the OSHA guidelines for space between desk and chairs and rolling chairs and all of that stuff, right? So and all of that goes to build that list of assumptions that then gets put out for design engineering. Uh, to go quote and then they put it out to bid for contractors.
Was the um F I C attaching their list of. What they believe the edge, the prioritization of educational needs should be?
So that's in there, um, so, sorry, it's not attached, but it I can provide it. Or the end, it can, I'll put it in the drive in the G M S recommendations, but we listed out what we thought, right, the upfront. Reports of would be, um, I I'll say pertinent documents, right, the H L Turner report, the onsite insight report. The list of educational needs, um, which is essentially, um, another F I C member, now the citizen co-chair. Um, Joe Lassard, he put together like the first five years of what onsite insight said, here's all the physical stuff. Then he took Dan to put his into that whole list into that document, so I can easily provide that as well. Um, and then I was also gonna put in the report that Joe did on the commu- on the survey that we did, the show, we polled the town, right, is. We got eight hundred and fifty three responses, so we got like forty three percent. Ri- roughly of the voting membership within the town, to say, and they they gave their responses, right, so I. Not forty three, like eighteen percent, something like that, right, but it it's not an insignificant number of people. Um, to respond to it.
So we'll obviously need help drafting an R F P, I think prior to getting to that point. Um, it's important for us to. Understand on a more concrete presentation level, what we're going to be telling them. Our educational, like I know we've looked at it on that, on that list, um, but I think that that now needs to come to the board to as a part of a discussion. Probably should come to the board, um. Through you guys with like, you know, here's what we've talked about, I mean, I think Dan should probably be involved too. So then that way we know we're going in the right direction, we could ask questions before we start the process of even trying to go through.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Julie's been doing some research, obviously, we we knew at some point R F P would come into play, right, in some capacity. So Julie's been doing some research and has a a variety of projects that have happened throughout the state of different Elks, right, like. Um, too close to my heart, the the bow one, right, that just got done. And the Wyndham Elementary that got done about seven, eight years ago, they're vastly different projects, but looking at their R F Ps and seeing how they were structured and framed and. The requests, they were both renovation projects essentially, right, um, so there is that similarity between the two.
Those projects, were those part, did they go into those projects saying, we need you to design a renovation project?
So, ye- yes, both of them did.
Were slightly different in the regard that we're saying, well, we need you to kinda tell us what.
Well, I think the bow one, I'm not as up to speed on the insides of Wyndham, even though it's where I live, just more on the what was discussed publicly and. Frankly, my kid wasn't in school yet, so wasn't paying attention the most to it, um, but with the bow one, like they did go into that. Like, the idea is we gotta do something to this building and like a renovation, we're not gonna build a new school, so it's gonna be a renovation. But does an addition make sense, and they had their list similar to what the F I C has of priorities, right, and as they went through the process with the designer. Okay, that's too expensive, we have to live without that, or, you know, we could live without that, but then the designer's like, well. You gotta bundle these together, right, it doesn't make sense to just take that off and that, and they got to a final kind of project that everyone felt good about. And then kinda went into the the next to build part of it afterwards, the construction part of it afterwards.
And I think that's what we need help with, right, because the F I C is just gonna get wrapped around the axle of what's a priority, what is and and all of it, and.
It needs to be assumed now by the.
You you need, just watching that.
And whatever firm and whatever in.
Again, I I watched that project from afar as since I was the high school principal and it was being done at the elementary school, right? But there was definitely dialogue between the people who were design, making the designs in the district, right, and there was a back and forth. And cost was part of the discussion, right, the initial. Um, design was not, was more than what the district was looking to spend, so then how do we part that pair of this down? They wanted to see that higher cost, so they knew what everything on their list would get to and realize that that was an attainable, that was. Important for the transparency of it all, right? And I could see like the different versions of how, alright, if we take these things off, this is what happens to the costs, right? And sometimes it depends on what you, sometimes a singular thing actually didn't change the cost, right, or you had group. You gotta do this in a group, you gotta take this offer on and this could be the change of it and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I I mean, and I think the important thing, right, is to make the distinction, uh, you know, cause we went down the path several times of. It's not the F I C's per- prerogative to write an R F P, right, it is, here's a recommendation for the school board to go pursue. And then the school board and the administration need to do their due diligence of structuring and writing that R F P appropriately.
And having it makes sense for a school project, I appreciate, um, a lot of feedback from people who have worked in professional fields in that F I C, but. You know, ours is gonna be in the school lens, not like a a corporate building or something like that.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Um, I'm trying to, I don't know the right words for this. I'm letting you guys have it out, I mean, I, I guess, and maybe this is was unfair on my part, I expected a more detailed recommendation.
You've been trying to, I I actually, I can't say weeks, I'm not on the F I C. They've been trying to. That was not what was coming.
I understand, I, it didn't change the fact that, it doesn't change the fact that here we are now, April. We're gonna probably be May before this is discussed. And so my concern is, what is the timeline look like from here, and do we have enough time? To do what we need to do, whatever that is, to get something on the ballot in March, or is that? Because I don't want it rushed, I don't want it.
And I think that's the thing, the time is the time, right, so it's it's just, we're we're kinda, we kinda resigned ourselves after a bunch of meetings to the fact that. This is just as much about figuring out what the solution is as it is about what solution is going to be. Is going to pass.
And I and I understand, it's gonna be a different perspective depending on who you ask, what someone may think is the solution. You know, I I watched the F I C meeting, what one person was advocating for the solution that they knew all along and knew a year ago. Is different than what other people on F I C believe the solution is and what that looks like, and so. You know, I, again, I guess my concern is, we did not. We had our March vote last year, we did not put anything on the ballot related to G M S beyond adding some additional funds to. Repairs and whatnot, just to start to plan, are we gonna have enough time to to get where we need to go potentially by March? And that's, that's my concern, and I don't know that that can be answered, I think it's gonna depend on how this goes, um. You know, that being said, having again, watched the F I C meeting, I appreciate all of the time that. You, 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 Peter, um, Dan Mitchell and everyone else has put into, yeah. Anyone who's been coming has put into this because this is, I mean, those meetings are like these meetings.
They're they're long, I, we're making, it it's it's even I clearly get frustrated at times, but like. We are making progress, right, and I think time is the time, right, like it is, we're, we are taking steps positive. I would like to get something on the March ballot, that's what I've kinda said the whole time, I think we're all in agreement that that is kinda the ultimate goal. We can't rush it and we gotta make sure people feel valued about it, right, and it's easier for us to say that we're new to this whole process and I know the town's been. For a long, long time, like looking for the answer to this, but, you know, our goal is to get that answer once and for all, right, you know, and. And we're gonna, that's still our target, is a March, March twenty sixth vote, you know.
I just wanna make sure that we're leaving enough time, what I feel like wasn't properly done last time because we had the sudden. Change in the location of where it was gonna be, is that sort of public relation?
Relations piece, I mean, that, that I, that's something we need to be hiring, like, we, that is absolutely not something. As as someone who is involved or.
I think we did try to do that, I didn't wish hire Charlie somebody, I I'm having a name in my head, but I don't know last name, but.
But a lot of that was, the directive was, go find a community member who can.
Yeah.
I, there was no real good message.
I mean, the the biggest thing about doing in in the, I'll say, interacting with the community on this, right, is. We need to show the transparency of, we did a year's worth of, you know, call it, you know, in in the school board's mind, uh, a delay of. Just getting into community input, right, a lot of this was a lot of back and forth with the community's input. Half of the voting membership, more than half the voting membership is citizens. And then the other aspect is, we also brought in the board of selectmen. We also brought in a, you know, as a voting member, as well as, you know, budget committee and state reps, right, selectmen, reps. Um, as in as well, again, budget committee was non-voting, but just to get the perspective of that way. We can see what their heads are at as we do this, in the way the pros versus the cons, I mean. In in doing that, a- and I know it seems like we took a very long time, but I think. Getting that stat, that side of community input, it very contentious, very electric at times. Is incredibly important as a part of the transparency. And I think with our message back out to the community, and I I agree with Matt, it it needs to be a hired firm. Um, and we need to highlight the transparency, it's like, listen, this has been out there, right, this is what we're doing, we brought in the community. And then highlight, you know, what Brian mentioned, right, is that whoever's gonna come in is gonna come in with a top dollar figure and say. Alright, we already said no to that, so here's what we did to get back down to this number, that's why we're going forward with this number. This is everything we need or everything we want, this is what we're asking for right now.
Just to be clear, I would argue with someone that says the F I C delayed, I don't think there was a delay, I really don't, like, I understand people's perspective on saying that. I don't think that's correct, I think that was time well spent figuring out. The differing opinions of our community, which on this issue are very different, so I I think it's. It's important to flush all that out and give it the time it needed. I guess, maybe what I'm looking for and and I don't know if I, who, I don't know how to word it correctly, but, you know. You know, when I'm going to the airport on a trip, my flight leaves here, so I back everything up from there, this is when I need to get to the airport, this is when I need to go through security. Is there a timeline that we can put together, marches the ballot, we wanna have it done here?
I I don't think we can do it in that. At at that level, I think we have to do it, the immediate level right now is, okay, we need to get to an RFP, so. Backing into that, we need to get a presentation about, we need to really hone in on what are our educational requirements. And we need to get that list, you know, the list has gone through the F I C multiple times, it needs to come to us now so that we can really weigh in on that. Once that's done, we can get the RFP out. And then eh the second that someone is engaged for that, we can then work on the timeline and say, is it even a, is it possible?
Again, I appreciate that, but on the backend, I'd also like to say that. In order to have a successful P R, you know. This is how many months you need for that, so if we don't have an answer. Or numbers by, and I don't know, fill in the blank, December, November, October, whatever it is, I don't know. This is where we need to start to have the discussion of, does this wait another year?
So to get that answer, though, we can either hire a P R firm now to tell us, or. We wait until someone is awarded the, you know. The bid that we're putting out and see if they can help.
I guess my question, did Bo do that? Did they have P R?
No, but.
That was a much different.
I get it, I'm just saying like what I I.
No, but there are certainly communities that do do P R for these type of projects, right, and hire P R people to do the project, right? Every town, every district is unique when they do these type of projects, like. That Bo project, that each project's different, that Bo project was supported in its basic parameters from the beginning, right? And you know, there's weird things about it, like it was actually originally on the ballot for the COVID vote. And then COVID happened and they had to reduce it down to a dollar and like a bunch of other things, so like, it it was like. A good process, but choppy because of that huge interruption to it. Um and they didn't do that, but hearing you, like I I think. Maybe, you know, I'm listening to what we can do for the next meeting, and I think we can do a couple of things to maybe help this discussion along. Maybe do a more formal presentation on the educational needs to the board, right, have Dan here, go through the list and say this is. We have the rankings from the people, uh what the F I C thought was the most valuable, there's the like repairs that come from the onsite insert report and H L Turner reports. There, and then if you've been in the F I C meetings or seen it on T V, there's a yellow section which is more educational, and then there are. Your nuts and bolts, educational needs, you have. Twenty classrooms because you have four hundred and forty kids, right, you know, and do that kinda presentation for the board. And also maybe reach out to some of these districts and see what their timelines were for some of these different projects and figure out how many people. Like who got some P Rs, who who the, they go with.
It's good, I I agree with you that we need to know, but at the end of the day, we. If we were to say, okay, well, we have to start right now with P R, what would we even do?
No, I don't think we'd, I, I don't expect that answer, but what, I guess what I'm trying to say is hindsight's twenty twenty, right? So if we can look back at the last project and some of the things that I feel like we didn't do as well or that we could have done better. As a board, one of the things I come back to is, I think. We had discussions about having some type of, you know, getting into town, really having, you know, listening to people, educating people, having those conversations. We didn't have the time to do it because we didn't know what the plan was until.
We are volunteers, so I, with jobs, so.
I I all, I hear what you're saying, Matt, and I don't mean to cut you off, and I apologize, you can yell at me later, um.
Just snap back when you're done.
But in, a- and I will say in my, in my professional world, right, is not having a timeline. Leads to scope creep. And then it leads to bleed and then the project starts blowing up and everything, right, so. I I hear the, a- and I agree with, the timeline's gonna be the timeline, but I think we should. Start finding out what that is, as we go through and do it now.
Right, so my opinion is, the only timeline we can work on right now is this RFP timeline. Because we don't know what the scope is, you can't create a timeline for a scope of something that you don't know.
Eh and we could also work at it from the backend of, when does the budget committee need all final warrant articles?
Really just a matter of, that's really just a matter of, are we gonna hit?
Right, but. But but again, it gives us a frame, right, so then right up front, we can make the decision, is it even a shot?
We already know that, though, what is it, it's like, we we basically said, we have to have.
Everything except for whatever this possible proposed solution is to G M S by December. And then January is when we have to have like actual wording for the warrant.
I don't think we can get to a guaranteed maximum price in time for a March vote, to be honest with you.
I, so but that's where, ever, if we need it to the budget committee by January, right, let's call it mid, Jan fifteenth.
It's gonna really be December, right?
I think what eh my understanding from Andrew last meeting was, he told them that we would have all warrant articles and language to them, except.
In November, right?
Because they're still meeting in December. I thought he said December, understanding that January.
I have to go back and review what our conversation.
But ultimately, we'd be, we'd, we would need a guaranteed maximum price by that point.
But I also, you know, having watched the way the police station went down, I don't think the budget committee had enough time with the police station to be able to do the. Conversations that they needed to have too, and so again, all this hindsight's twenty twenty, at the time, you're working really hard and I don't fault anyone for. Either project, but I'm just saying, what can we learn from those to apply to this?
So if we, if we put an RFP out, right, and I'm just gonna use the example of Kyle Barker, because we were just talking about Kyle Barker. If it ends up that he bids the project and and gets the project and says, well. I already have a head start on all this cuz I've done two or three years worth of work on this, then that may be a different.
And that should be a part of our qualifications of when we select whoever we're gonna work with. Right, so I. I guess, I agree with both of you, but I think it makes sense for this project, we just put. Those need dates on a calendar and. If Kyle comes back and says, no, it's gonna be eight months to go design this, yep, so this is out. Right?
We can certainly do that, I mean.
But I I also agree, the first step is, we gotta. Understand what that looks like.
I think Matt and Al, I think everyone is saying the same thing, I think starting to map out what this timeline looks like, like. We do need to start legitimate P R on this, we're go-. I'm not diminishing the budget committee, but you you have set dates for those meetings and stuff, but. Let's talk about selling project, right, like if we want something that's gonna get approved in March, you gotta at least at the turn of the year, start. Legitimately, at a minimum, at the turn of the year, start legitimately, set like, telling people what you're doing.
If you get a good P R. Firm or person, they're gonna look at this community and they're gonna say, we really need to be educating people the entire time on on what we're doing, step by step, because. You'll you'll find that people think that we like literally just like woke up the day before the election in March, we're like, you know. I think we can add this, someone getting a cram.
So and and that's where I agree, right, is I think, you know, engaging with the P R, eh and I would say, RFP takes precedence to try to get this out. And understanding what that timeline looks like. But then I think immediately behind it is, we need to start looking and engaging with a P R firm and. Um I I would say, uh start that dialogue of. Here's what we got, here's what we've had in the past, and and just, we need help gauging. When should we start with you, right? Versus, you know, we just don't need someone to put flyers out and make sure they get door knockers, you know, the door hangers on and everything else, it's. We need to say that this failed vote contentious, but we need to start education. Educating and showing the transparency of everything we've done since that failed vote of what we're trying to accomplish. Cause ultimately, as a citizen, right, I'm gonna look as, let's say that figure's twenty million dollars. It's gonna come down to is, what am I getting for that twenty million dollars? And and it's gonna be, how is it gonna benefit the community, the town, the schools? Versus just, I need twenty million dollars.
Well, and the other piece of that, the big piece of that is, it's also gonna be, do I feel like? The people in charge of this project have actually, you know, given, is is twenty million like really the best bang for my buck?
Sharing with us, have they thought of everything, is it gonna be like another L M S?
That's exactly, that's exactly what we've.
I get it. I think we're on the same page, just saying it differently, um I would be curious to hear. Peter and Andrew's thoughts, if they, you know, we can reach out to them, obviously, and I'm sure that.
Regardless, I, we need to, we need to put an extremely substantial amount of time in our agenda. For you guys to be able to present that, but for us to also be able to discuss.
And and help with that, right, is, so I think a part of the agenda going back to the F I C is gonna be, here's the next steps, right at the school board level. Right, is we're gonna make a presentation, a formal presentation structured around the loose language. That we guided on, and then it's gonna be the F I C, you know. I know the F I C is gonna wanna come back, or certain members are gonna wanna come back and say, well, I wanna, you know, I wanna proofread your RFP before it goes out. And I, that's up to us to allow that to happen or not, and and whether we go with it. Um so just, eh again, food for thought.
Alright, I think we talked this one pretty thoroughly through, again.
Took was me getting off the F I C for a recommendation.
Ah, yeah, we, you knew that was. Um policy, we haven't met, so there are no updates on that, moving into old business, um. The F I C operations discussion with the F I C governing articles. Um I watched the meeting, I didn't see that you guys had a lot of time to get into that at all, you spent more time, which you should, rightfully so, focusing on the recommendation.
We should have a law now.
So I I I actually said in the beginning of that meeting, is the school board is doing this, we are editing it, we're going through it. Um that's not the subject tonight's meeting, I I just said, it's gonna come. It's gonna come after we get a recommendation of the school board, so now, right, this is gonna be from the school board's side. Here's our recommended edits, right, and go from there.
I liked all it.
Yeah, so I know, I got a couple edits from our last meeting, I updated it as it is, so if people are. Happy with it, I'll take off, like the track changing stuff there, and then just have that final proposed document. And we have F I C next week, we can. If, you know, leave up to the chairs, but I would recommend bringing this there and having it on the agenda, so.
Alright, sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, moving into school board comments. We've commented a lot tonight. For three of us, um okay, manifest, I believe it has three signatures. Um I'm gonna read the manifest from our four-two-twenty-five meeting, we had a payroll manifest, uh seven forty-seven. Spring sports coaches first payout is what it says on payroll, and that was four hundred and seven thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. We had had a manifest pay seven four-seven E F T voluntary four-three B deductions in the Hampshire Retirement for two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Two hundred and thirty-two, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. We had to pay seven forty-seven vendors, L E A and L S S A dues for three thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. We had twenty-five dash twenty-two G L accounts payable municipal lease health insurance in Bay Point for six hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. And then we had a manifest number twenty-five B M O dash ten credit cards for twenty-nine thousand. Four hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents, gosh, I feel like Danny, like reading those numbers. Okay, so that was our manifest, um I will open it up for our last community input of the night. Seeing no community, I will go ahead and close community input for the night at this.
Motion to enter non-public.
And there's a motion. And we have a second, um again, we'll be going into non-public RSA ninety-one dash A three. For tonight, we're doing the dismissal promotion and compensation, the hiring of any person matters if discussed in public, so A, B, and C. Um all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, right. Thank you, Matt, Dan. And I'm an aye, so we did roll call vote that, um we are now moving into public session, I hope everyone has a great, what did I say?
You said public.
Yeah, my time's running out, I'm turning into a pumpkin, our next meeting is May seventh, we do have a longer um break, I hope everyone has a wonderful April vacation next week. Good spirit weeks, um everything that's going on, so, thank you, have a good night.